A lot of what they said was, "Community, community, community. This building is all about our community." We also asked, "What are you trying to do here? What is your desired outcome? You know, for a student that comes here in kindergarten and leaves in eighth grade, what is your goal?" We started with saying that we want our kids to have a lot of definitions of success. So we want students that do understand reading, writing, arithmetic, and are college-bound. But we also want students that can build something with their hands, that can create things, that can work collaboratively with others, and that could go directly into labor force and say, "You know what? I was well-prepared, K through eight, to launch my life in any direction." We wanted students that were confident, open-minded, and we wanted to make sure that every student we were able to accommodate personalized learning experience, which means students that need extra help get extra help, that we have space to do that; students that can work at a higher level have the ability to work at a higher level, and we have space to be able to do that. They did ultimately want students, at the end, to be critical thinkers and problem solvers that work well with others and are employable, functioning adults. That's the big goal, and that every space we create should be working in that direction. So if we tell them, "We want you to work collaboratively with others," one thing we said was, "Well, where are they going to do that? And we're going to need some space that they can collaborate with other kids, with small groups, that isn't just teacher-driven." And we did note, of course, there's a lot of pride. They want students to continue to have pride in Deerfield as a community school. Now, we have some, "Where are your obstacles then in delivering this?" The first thing they said was, "You know, being a small community has these great aspects of feeling supported and also having, you know, kindergarten to be able to collaborate with the eighth graders who are in the same building." But also it's the downside that they don't have unlimited resources. You know, a larger city would have more educators, more specialists, you know, more opportunities. They said, "So we are asking everybody here to wear more than one hat." So that's an obstacle, but it's an obstacle that we work to overcome. One of the, we'll call the obstacles that are easily, facility issues that came up was, "Our middle school students don't have the same middle school experience that they'd like to deliver. They don't have a family consumer science environment where they can learn to cook, they can learn about nutrition, they can learn those basic life skills. We just don't have that space." We also don't have a tech ed area, what used to be called shop, an area where they can build things with their hands. We just don't have that square footage, we don't have that space for them to do that. They felt we really lack, when we say state-of-the-art facilities, we don't, we can't really define the current building as state-of-the-art. The building, obviously, it's a good building, but it was built before the idea that every student would have technology in their hands, and therefore it's not set up to have ubiquitous technology or have the students plug in, you know, in any portion of the building. We have a lot of undersized spaces. Because we have undersized spaces, any personalized learning spaces, small group spaces, the students' work have been utilized for something else. And we don't have any collaborative areas, as in, we don't have areas where two classes can get together and meet. The gym is always booked, every space we have is always booked, or else we wouldn't have portables out there. We lack some professional development space, and there's, there's the idea too, we've met with the middle school team, but it would be nice if the middle school had its own culture, its own area, and its own culture and subset within the school, so that kids essentially feel there is a middle school and there's an elementary school. We're all part of DCS, but the middle school kids feel like, "You know, I'm a different student now, I'm in a different area of the building, my expectations are different." Because obviously, an eighth grader and a kindergartner are different kids, they're different people altogether. And they noted something that's not really building-related, but they had said, "You know what? We are also, we understand we have to work really hard to develop students that both are part of this community but understand that there's a bigger world out there, that, you know, where they're not always exposed to everything, so our educators worked really hard to say, 'World issues do exist, and you may not see them every day, so it's got to be part of our curriculum.'" So ultimately, then, we said, "Well, what learning models need to be accommodated in any addition or renovation scenario?" Right at the top, first two items were those missing spaces for middle school. Family consumer sciences, that don't just grow, integrated nutrition and foods, life skills, techno- technology, technical education, meaning hands-on building areas, things like robotics, woodshop, art, 3D printing, anything that students can get their hands on to build to do a longer project that has meaning to apply learning. Project-based learning at really every grade level, so while a middle schooler may not want to be working on woodworking, or, I'm sorry, a kindergartner may not want to be working on woodworking, we do want students to have an area where they can do projects that you can start the project one day and not have to finish and take it home at the same day, because you have enough space to leave it there and say, "I'm going to come back and work more on it and get a larger, more in-depth project built." Technology education, if you've been around the school, you can see that technology is attempted to be integrated. We're seeing this now, obviously, we've got a cord hanger from the ceiling, we're doing the best we can with getting technology into the rooms that weren't designed to take technology. We said, "We really should have some tech-rich areas, including some of the areas up the library that are adequately sized, where students have access to full technology. If they say, 'We're doing presentations today, we're working on the computer,' here's where to go to." And then we do need some collaborative common areas. The collaborative common areas, we've got a lot of discussion. The first is, there should be a whole school, you know, community space, that it's a school's space as well as a community use space that can, we can bring the entire school together, other than just the gym, the gym's always booked. So we said, "We should have an area to gather the students together, or an area for the community to use to do a presentation, a discussion, a workshop." We also should, each grade level should have access to some areas outside their, outside their classrooms, where they can work in small groups, and where they can send students to go do individual work. Again, some of their goals was to, "Let's get students that are directors of their own learning and kind of take those initiative." In order to do that, we need to give them independent work areas where the teacher's not standing right over them and directing their work. So those are kind of the goals of what we talked about. Now, I know some of you, let's look next slide, please. Some of you may not be familiar with some of the terminology I just used. I try to get rid of ARCA speak, or EDGAB, or any of those terms that people are just not used to. When we talk about common areas, the spaces they're talking about are spaces like this, maybe not this large, but a space where a teacher can send students out to do work as an extension of the classroom. That may be because a student is more advanced than what the group is going over, or they're falling behind, or they need to work in a small group to work independently. So spaces like this, that aren't closed-in boxes, aren't teacher-directed. Again, we looked at this as a group and said, "Yes, this is great, we may not need that big, this is a bigger school, but we want some areas kind of like that." Or areas like this, which is a large environment that can be used for a bunch of things. We obviously can't invest in space that can only be used for one thing, we would like to invest in space that can be used for a lot of things. So can this be used for, you know, with switching the furniture, for school gatherings, for projects, for, teacher wants to set up, you know, an art project that's going to take, you know, the entire year, we want a space big enough that we can do that and keep using that space for multiple different uses. So again, it's justifiable if it's taxpayer dollars going into it, that we're getting a lot out of that dollar. They also said some of these spaces can be very small. Some of the spaces that the teacher said, "I just need a spot for a kid to be able to go out to work and then come back in when they're done their work, so I can keep the group moving." They can be as simple as a small area just outside a classroom like this, that will really enhance the learning, enhance the opportunities that students are getting. And we did look at, other schools have done this affordably and said, "You know what? It could be as simple as taking the wall down, opening what used to be a classroom to a little common area that several teachers could share." They're happy to share that space, they just need a little bit of space to work with. We did look at the project-based learning specific to middle schools, and what they really described was things both that look like this, where students are building, engineering, and doing things like robotics and higher-tech stuff, that jobs of the future are really demanding, as well as integrating more traditional things like wood, cardboard materials to build something. So that's their vision for some of the indoor learning. So with that in mind, what we're trying to accomplish, and all of the shortcomings of this building, we've created a few concepts that the building committee is currently looking at that are potential ways to solve it. With that, I'll turn it back over to Jay to go through those concepts.
Yeah, Lance and I will both go through the concepts. What I did want, I just mentioned that I kind of skipped over at the beginning. There is a link, or there will be a link on the school website that will take you to a project website, that you can get more information about the project. If you've got questions, there's a button, there will be a button there for you to hit to ask your questions. We'll have our frequently asked questions to tell you about the project. We want to get as much feedback from you as possible, so if you don't feel comfortable speaking tonight, please feel free to use that, that feedback button. And again, we're just trying to gather as much information as we can. So taking everything, we just talked about everything, all the information we gathered, everything we learned about your community, we learned about your school, now it's time to turn that into a plan that we can develop that we think meets your needs. Some of the tricky parts are, obviously, you have an existing building, you want to use as much existing square footage as we can. This is valuable space we're in right now, this whole building's very valuable space. How can we reuse or repurpose it, or even just enhance it without having to build something new? So, we looked at where we can build on and how we build on to the building. As you entered this, the school today, you come off, went to the school, this is the existing school right here, because I don't know where we are. The pond is here, the fields are right back there, right here. Everyone have a rough idea where we're talking about. The parking lot, and we have the bus loop that happens right out there, the existing school. And this concept is adding on to the front of the school. As we looked at all the area around here, the front of the school seemed to be one of the most logical places to add on to the building. So by putting a new piece in the front of the building, it would look something like this. So, as we're looking at the front of the building, we have a new piece that would come off. The lower part, or the under, the area you first walked into, would have our library, would have our music rooms, would have our art rooms. In addition, we'd also have a secure main entry, secure nurse area, all the admin support space on the lower level. And the center part of this would have that community common space that Lance was talking about, the space that the community could use for after-hours events, and the school could use during the day for events throughout the whole day.
So our, our goal in this concept was renovate the building in place, take out a couple walls to be able to create the missing spaces, like the small group areas, special education areas, you know, a large enough nurses area. And in doing that, replace both the portables, as well as the classrooms that were pushed out of this building to give us, to resize the areas, and build that two-story wing out front. The goal being, community spaces are still focused right in the building, you still have, the community still has access to the gym, you have a large community gathering area that's still can be used during the day for projects, and that the community can use in the evening for events or for meetings. But we're trying to create that, and we also did note, everything we do has to be phaseable, because obviously, we're not going to send the kids home, at least not again. So we said, "This one, we could do the addition first, move the kids in, and then renovate in quadrants of this building, each of the areas that need to renovate, using both summer construction, as well as with students having access to new areas, actually shuffle the kids around and make sure it's a safe, baseable project that, you know, they get early, early on, they have access to good new space, and essentially, education never goes downhill during the construction."
On the upper level, this would be classroom spaces, as Lance alluded to, would be a middle school set up as a team concept middle school area. And as you can see, these are really early concepts, we're working with the committee right now. So as we get more feedback, we'll see that we get more refined.
But one thing we did want to mention too, is all of these concepts that we looked at, we really want to enhance that outdoor learning. And what we found from a lot of the educators is, the younger the kid, closer that outdoor learning environment needs to be to them if they're going to use it. Inevitably, if you take a first grader or a kindergartner, you go to one of the further outdoor learning areas, as soon as you get there, I'm going to use the bathroom, and then you're all back into the building. Seventh and eighth grade, a little less of an issue. So we said, "Whatever we do, we want to create some outdoor learning areas that are very close to the building." On this concept, we looked at having those outdoor learning areas right here, where they can be secure, but they're very close to the kindergarten and the first graders, so they can get some outdoor learning in and not con- So that's option one.
So option two, again, orient yourself, this is the existing school. This would be adding on to one side of the school. So we still keep the loop, the drop-off loop the way it is, we'd be going to do an addition similar to where the portables are now, and then out to the front of the school. That would look something like that. Again, this is the front face of your building right now, there'd be an addition coming off the other side there. On the lower level, we'd create some additional classrooms to supplement the portables that are coming down into the classrooms that Lance talked about in concept one. In addition, we have music and art on the lower level there. On the upper floor, would be a new middle school area, set up as a team middle school common area. The connector piece would be that community space that we're really talking about, the space that different organizations could use in the evenings, it could be shut down, a space that could be used throughout the whole day for all different learning activities for the school. And that would flow nicely into the existing gymnasium space that's there for community space.
Now, you can see on this concept, it gives us a little bit more opportunity to build a little bit more square footage, because we're not just out front, we've actually wrapped around. So in this concept, we have the opportunities, right now, most of your grade levels have about three classrooms per grade, based on a student population, and then you have bubbles that come through, they're demand four, that currently you have that bubble in your seventh grade, and kindergarten has, needs a fourth because of their numbers. So on this concept, we're able to build a couple extra classrooms to be able to accommodate those bubbles as they keep coming through your system, even if your population doesn't grow exponentially, you still have those waves of kids coming through. This gives you a little bit more square footage and a little more flexibility to do that. You can see, the community space, compared to the last concept, the first community space was, you know, about the size of this box here, compared to the gym. This space is a little bit bigger, so it's not, the community use space isn't nearly the size of a gym, but on this concept, it's between a third and a half the size of a gym, so it's a pretty good-sized room that could be used for a myriad of things. It is a two-story space, and it does have direct access to the community, can use it after hours, evenings. During the day, that community access would be shut down, and it works as the hub between the two buildings, the middle school on the upper floor, and the specials on the lower floor, offset. Again, it is baseable for us, we could build this building, then take out the portables, then build the connector, and then start renovations, so we can keep the kids safe and productive throughout this entire construction period. So that's concept two.
What that would do is, on the lower level here, it would take the classrooms and create a pre-K cave ring on the lower level, and a middle school wing above that. And on this side, it takes a lot of those special spaces we talked about, art, music, and puts that into the connector, and this space right here becomes the new gymnasium, moving the media center downstairs and creating a media center commons area in the center of the school, and creating a new gym on the outside of the, the, the project at the perimeter.
So the goal on this one, as we start talking about that student, the common area, and a lot of the diagrams that the educator comments say, "There's going to be a common area that we all share, it should be smacked out in the center of the building, so that we can have direct access to it." The one thing that's smacked out in the center of the building right now is your gym. So we said, "Well, what if we built the gym over here? That gives community direct access to this, and reuses the gym for something else." The gym then can squeeze a lot of things in it. That is where we put our library or media center, it's project-based learning areas. And we essentially packed that and say, we're just going to repurpose the entire gym, and we built your community one out here. Of the three concepts, this one, as you could probably guess, has the most square footage. That means it also has the most availability for flexing those bubbles that come through. And essentially, in this concept, you can easily get to four classrooms at every grade level, if your population grew in that direction. In the short term, a lot of those other classrooms that are flexible spaces can be used for a number of things that we talked about that are missing, including professional development, including intervention, and kind of breaking those into smaller spaces.
So these are the concepts we wanted to present tonight. As I said earlier, we're really here to take some feedback. And I guess I'll rely on the school board to help facilitate how that happens. But we'd like to get some feedback. We probably don't have all the answers tonight. But what we're going to do is, we're going to take down any questions, and we'll put them on the frequently asked questions, try to answer them as quickly as we can, so that we get information back to you. But we're really here to gather some feedback from you tonight.
So if you can tell us, it's always helpful to say, I like something. But if you can tell us why, like, I like concept one because it does this. I don't like concept two because it does this. If you can expand upon the why, that's very helpful for us. And the committee, we'll use that for our actions to say, okay, they said the reason they didn't like this was that, how can we solve that issue? So obviously, when you give commentary, thumbs up and thumbs down is...
Because the option four may be, and option one maybe, whoa. So I think that's really important. I like the things that I see. It's wonderful, but it's wonderful. But I think it's going to be really expensive, and that's what I'm interested in. I think the community should be too.
So I will certainly say that cost is something that needs to be considered. But I think for tonight's conversation, we're trying to get conceptual feedback as to how the space can be better utilized.
I figured that.
It's very early for, you know, the cost.
But I had to say this.
Anybody else?
I was going to say the same thing. I'm Bobby. I live on Brown Road. I just want to know which one will inter, not interfere, which one will take the least amount of shuffling around for the teachers and the students? So which one will create the least amount of chaos?
That aren't construction.
Do you know that yet, or no?
I would say that each of them is very, very baseable, very doable without having any impact to construction, to, sorry, construction interacting with the school. I would say concept one, because it ties up your main entrance. It's going to, the only difference between the concepts is, that's the one that would require a diverted main entrance for, you know, a few months. But overall, I don't think any of these concepts, I mean, we obviously wouldn't have floated any of that as saying we're going to heavily impact it. We looked at these concepts already to make sure they're baseable. And I don't think any of them are going to have the detrimental to the functioning of the school.
Okay, so they won't be like, okay, this week, this teacher's in that room, it's going to be...
Not at all.
Okay.
We will put together, once we get a concept, we will put together a phasing plan. We will present that to the faculty first, get their input, and then to the parents, just so that everybody knows, this semester, you're going to see contractors that stand over here, and this is where your dropout's going to be, et cetera, et cetera. We will do that in the future.
Okay, and then, I guess that kind of answered my next question is, the outside looks great, but do you have, like, interior blueprints that, like, estimated areas? Because in order to, like, I really like option two and three, because I do think that'll be the least amount of impact on the faculty and students. But what does the inside look like that could make us maybe say, I like this one better or less?
We just presented those to the committee, and we're recycling those through the faculty first. But we will have those, we will have those in the future.
Great.
I'm sorry, at a really high level right now, we just wanted to get stuff to the communities as soon as possible. And so those plans are being reviewed right now.
What is the time, say, say things move fairly quickly with planning, and I know that getting permits and stuff is on there. But is this like five years down the road, 10 years down the road, that you start construction? When is your estimated?
Just, I want to imagine a timeline. If it were to be voted on in March, we would essentially be able to start the design work. We need about eight months to do the design work. So we'd be bidding that product out the following, that winter. It's a good season for bidding in New Hampshire, that's when our bids are most competitive, if we commit that January timeframe.
Okay.
Construction would start the following summer. And construction on a project of this size would be between 18 and 24 months.
Okay.
So depending on how the phasing works. It could be just past 24 months, a few years of construction, but things would be going online.
Oh yeah, thanks, Nag, I get it. I get it.
Things would be coming online, like, I mean, you might be 12 months in, you get the new gym. And then, you know, 18 months in, you get this new wing. And we'd bring those things online as quickly as possible, because we are removing students to those. We would, none of the moves would be necessarily planned for. It's not going to be like, hey, it's Tuesday, we need you all out of your rooms. It's going to be like, there's a thought-out move over this coming summer break. We're going to repurpose and move all the furniture from sixth grade to go into that wing.
Thank you.
For anyone that's thinking about providing input, I think one of the important things to keep in mind is, as a committee, what we're struggling with is, it's, we don't, as a committee, want to be the ones that pick option one, two, or three. Obviously, the staff is going to look at it and say, you know, this is going to create an incredible educational environment for us as staff. And yes, cost is a huge factor. We can say, all right, well, let's just take the cheapest one that meets the staff's needs. But we want to make sure that we're not excluding the community, because for many of us who have grown up in Deerfield, the school has been a fixture of our community. And we think it's really important, whether it's tonight, or whether it's through the website, that we get the feedback from as many people in our town, because ultimately, this is going to, you know, be an asset for all of us, hopefully. So whether it's ideas that you have, you know, how the community could utilize the space in ways that we haven't previously been able to utilize the school. You know, nothing is outside of the box, so don't be shy in sharing those opinions. Obviously, yes, cost is a humongous factor for many of us in the community. And when we're trying to narrow down the options, that's an easy factor to take into account. What's harder is the what-ifs, or the abstract questions that we really want to, we don't want to be making a decision for the town any more than we have to be. So that kind of input would be really, really helpful, just to keep in mind.
Any other feedback? We'd love to hear from as many people as we can.
Hi, I'm Brittany. I had a question on this picture. Did you say in the left-hand building, one down, that pre-K would be on the first floor, and middle school would be on the second floor?
We did, so kindergarten and pre-K would be on the lower level.
But do you really want to mix middle school with the really little kids?
They'd be different floors, so they'd be very separated. The kids wouldn't intermingle, they wouldn't mix. But the thought process is, we can create larger kindergarten rooms that meet the standards for the bathrooms and everything they need. If we create that pre-K and K on the lower level, and on the upper level, with the middle school concept of creating these common areas, trying to reuse some existing space in the building might be a little tougher than to build something new. So that's the space to be created.
To clarify, too, the middle school would not enter through the pre-K. Middle school would come in through the doors, use the stairwells to go to the room.
Yeah.
So preschool and kindergarten on the first floor, nobody'd be going through that space. They would have that space all to themselves.
And would there be enough room on just that second floor to do those special things with the middle school kids? Things like woodworking and, you know, robotics? Just that one floor would be enough to do those things?
No, they'd spill out into the other area. But some of those spaces you're speaking about could be used by the rest of the school too. So some, most, majority of them would be used by the middle school.
Yeah.
But there's opportunities for other grades to come in and do projects in there.
Yeah.
So we want it flexible that the whole school can do, so it will be still.
So this would actually be, this is the middle school classrooms, and the breakout areas, and the common areas, and their small groups. The special, the woodworking, the consumer sciences, that's actually over here, right? Right on this concept. So the middle school is actually going to be spread across that whole upper floor, including existing areas, as well as some of these areas here.
I think it just doesn't give that compact feeling for kind of a separate middle school feel as much as some of the others do.
Okay, thank you for the feedback.
Anybody else? And if you want to see a different drawing when you come up, please just let them know when they can jump over it.
Kimberly Black. I've got, I've got a kindergartner, so I've got kind of a long-term projection here. Some things that I like are the idea of separating, separating out the younger kids from some of the middle schoolers, just in general, from a kindergartner to older kids. I think the older kids do need their space, so I liked the concept here. I do have the same concerns about them sharing a section of the building, even though I understand it'd be separate. I feel like there's a lot of work for overlap there, and having smaller kids right above older kids, maybe that close-knit, just as, without seeing the inside visual, it's hard to understand or see exactly how split up they would be, slightly partial to our gym, having grown up here. I have a hard time seeing it go away. But I do understand that it is lacking, and that a newer gym would probably be much more accommodating to our students. So I'm not totally off that idea. I didn't really like option one, in that I felt like it was exacerbating some current architectural issues that I feel like you'd have to overcome with the current building. And being able to separate from what's here allows this building to be able to be modified in the future. That's, that's an assumption. I'm not an engineer or architect, but that's some of the thought after you guys had brought up the roofing, knowing that this portion was built shortly after I graduated, shortly while I was graduating, and then beyond, knowing some of its shortcomings in this style. I think separating from this style and kind of going new is a better concept. So I liked three, I think, the best, because it kind of accommodates their separate spaces. And I think if I'm understanding correctly, that the middle school spaces would be a little bit closer to those, like woodworking, environmental sciences buildings, so they wouldn't be traveling across the building. I remember as a middle schooler, we kind of got some freedom, and so we would take advantage of that. So I think limiting the students' ability to take advantage of some of those longer strolls, unless they need it, the space is always fine. But keeping those, those areas closer to where they would be able to utilize them, I think, has an advantage. So, is there someone else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Kevin, go ahead.
Kevin Bourbon with Karen Road. I apologize if I forget which one he said it, but did I understand you correctly that it's estimated at $15 million in repairs to this building before the addition? Is that correct?
Yeah, we're looking at that order of magnitude cost. I mean, what we're doing next is, we are pulling on a construction magnitude estimate, all the costs. But in the amount of systems that need to be fully replaced, and the amount of repairs we have, we're in that order of magnitude cost of, if we didn't need any square footage, that just to get everything back up and running, replace the mechanical system, you know, fix any of the exterior envelope stuff, that we're in that order of magnitude cost yet. And that's, that's total cost, not just construction dollars, that's cost of a total project. And that's what we tried out with the project, total project cost, to get everything done.
Yeah, appreciate that. So I'll, I'll ask a question, and if you don't know the answer, that's fine. If I was to average, you know, all the options that you showed me, what's the order of magnitude cost that we would be looking at? What's the, is there any idea of a ballpark? No, thunder the wind, nothing we'd hold you to, but any ballpark?
We haven't, we haven't done that yet. I mean, I don't want to give you bad information, I just, we haven't done that. We, these are essentially hot up the press.
Yeah.
We showed them to the committee literally an hour ago. And they said, all right, we're okay with showing this to the community, get some feedback. We'll look forward to having that. I know, I know it's, it's a lens that we have to look at every project through, and we're not trying to not look at that. We just haven't gotten there yet, and that's our next step.
Great, thank you.
Can you repeat the options one more time?
So they're labeled one, two, and four.
I know.
I liked three.
Yeah.
I suspect something happened to number three along the way.
We did have a third concept, and we realized it had too much wetland impact, and we're going to spend significant dollars on wetland. And our civil engineer just before we came said, you can't do that. So we pulled it, we pulled it from here, so that's why we have one, two, four.
So option one, one more time, is adding on the front of the building. The new addition here, creating some outdoor learning areas on either side. Admins, secure admin, music, art, lower level, middle school, project spaces, community space in the center, renovating the school. Option two is adding on one side. This is the new presentation space here. Lower level, music, art, project spaces. Some classrooms on the lower level here. On the upper level would be some middle school spaces, such as the family consumer science we talked about, languages, check-in, those types of spaces, and then the true middle school hub of middle school classrooms in this area. Again, renovating the whole school in place.
And it is, it is one of our hurdles in all these concepts, to get all what we consider specials, so art, music, library. We'd like them to be on the first floor for a couple reasons. One, they get better community access. But the other is, fire code says that we're not supposed to have kindergartners or first graders on an upper floor, even for a portion of their day. So if there are space that gets used by them, we're trying to get them on the first floor. And all these concepts do accomplish that, of pushing those specials down.
And this is the fourth option, where we talked about. We have a new education wing with pre-K and K on the lower level, middle school classrooms above. The connector with the spaces Lance just talked about, music and art on the lower level. And then the spaces above that would be some of the family consumer science spaces and check-in spaces. And then the new box would be the gym. And then we repurpose the existing gym as the hub or the heart of the school. It has the media center in it, has a presentation area in it, is a, is a space where the school can meet as a, as a community. And it also can be used as community space in the evenings.
So, too quick? I was going to say, what I may want to add, and this is, again, so obviously, we're trying to solicit as much feedback as we can get. But I think another part of this conversation that's been alluded to by the architects is part of this project may involve, it's adding on to a building and creating more additional square footage. But at that same time, do we, as a community, look at rehabbing this building so that everything is effectively new? So that we're kind of starting at a new baseline of, we have what is effectively becoming a new facility. We're going to reuse the bones, but kind of upgrade, update, replace, repair, fix, and make 100% of Deerfield's educational facilities basically as good as good can be and new. And that's another part of this conversation that I'd like to get some feedback on, is we're kind of looking at this, is, does the community want additional square footage? Do they want us to leave our existing footprint to the extent they could be left alone? Or do we want to make this investment as a community if we look forward? And is part of that investment going to be bringing all of our educational space up to date and really refreshing everything for the community? So I mean, if anybody has any feedback they'd like to provide on that, I'd like to hear that as well.
Well, it sounds like he's already going to refurbish everything.
Well, that's all, it's part of the ongoing conversations, right?
Yeah.
So that's part of, I think, what we're really trying to solicit some feedback on is, do you leave the old ceiling tiles and the old floor? Or do you fix the mechanical and fix everything else and update it all?
Yeah, so feedbacking on that additional community, sorry, Amy here, then. I, I think it would be a big benefit for the town, especially for off-season. The facilities that we do have for community use now are pretty limited, especially in the cold winter months. And to be able to utilize a building that's already heated, we're not throwing more money into heating, you know, another building for very special purpose uses. I think that's, that's going to, from my perspective anyway, a big bonus for the community and very, you know, needed to sort of kickstart more community events. One question I had, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time or place to ask, but is any part of this considering any sort of green technology, solar, anything like that, to sort of take the costs, maybe, long-term, not?
So, the answer is yes, we're planning to do some analysis on any of these concepts to be as sustainable, as possible. Um, so, the answer is yes, we're planning to do some analysis on any of these concepts to be as sustainable as possible. We have discussed that once we get the concepts up and running, that some of the committee will have to make some decisions as to how green are we. Um, there's base level, which is, you know, we would at a minimum exceed the energy code, make you more efficient, everything from HVAC systems, exterior envelope, the lighting, let's be, you know, very as sustainable as possible, because we're building a building that's that's gonna outlast all of us. The next level from that is, do we also want to integrate solar technologies? We have done that on past projects, very often through power purchase agreements, so that, um, the school district benefits from the low rate, they do the right thing for department footprint. We haven't made those decisions as a committee yet, and that's one of the discussions we'll have. Once we get the concept narrowed down, is how green do we want to be and what is the cost to do that? Some things, as you know, extra insulation is pennies, it's not, not a not a big investment. Solar, that's a bigger investment, and it does have a payback period, but is it something that, you know, that the community can support? So we're looking forward to having those concepts. All I can say is that the bare minimum is that we're gonna be a lot more sustainable in the coming year.
And I'd love to hear that you, that's one of your passions, is that if the community really feels that that's something that we should be looking at, that's great to hear.
Yeah, makes, the technology has come so far, it just seems like it makes sense to certainly consider it and make sure the community's on board.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Um, I have a question about the the community space idea. Uh, I mean, it's a raised good point that you've done this in a few different communities over the years, and I'm sure there's some recent ones that have this sort of community space you're talking about. In those recent projects, what what do different, what are some examples that other communities use this space for? It seems sort of vague, and and I'm sure that you've done this enough times that you could give maybe some examples. Obviously, we're a different town than other towns, but what might be some ways that we could, as a community, use this space? What are some examples you're thinking of?
So each community is a little bit different, but I think some of the some of the things that we see very common is any meeting space. So when a group wants to have a space that they want to do a presentation, I mean, we're doing it tonight in a library, um, it works, it would be better if we had, you know, technology speaker system and, you know, break seating, so somebody short likely can see. Um, that's the basic meeting and presentations. We also see, um, obviously, the gymnasium is always going to be community use. I'm I'm sure your gym right now is booked. What we discussed as a committee is the bigger we make the space, the more activities other than basketball it can accommodate, so communities, we do see communities using it for dance, exercise type programs, or things like that, that say, you know, we just want to book a space once a week to be able to have our our group together there, um, and then meeting space. So we do see a lot of communities that have meetings, and they just want a space that they can go. Um, if, you know, sometimes it's a library, but sometimes it's just we, you know, a larger meeting room, so that we can get together, the technology is set up, and we can have our meetings there. Those are some, just a few examples. The larger spaces like an auditorium, that's when you start saying, hey, we've got a traveling artist, you know, or musician that's coming, and we have a spot for them to play. So you can see on on this concept, if you take a gym, you potentially could have a gathering area for the community of like two hundred, three hundred people in there, and have a, you know, traveling artist say, hey, we're coming to, we're coming to town, you know, we'd be happy to give you a presentation. That that fits the students and it fits the community to have a few more events in there.
Any other feedback that we could gather from the folks here? Okay.
So our next steps is, we're gonna work with the committee, we're gonna continue to take feedback, continue to refine these. Our goal is to get down to a single option that we can then assign dollars to, that we can assign tax impacts to, that we can start forming the community about what we'd like to build, how much it costs, and again, take this list of feedback, and eventually take community, take community input right through until we get to the to the vote. We will be a warrant article, it's planned right now for March. It should also be noted that throughout this process, even if you pass a warrant article in March, there's still a lot of decisions to make, there's still a lot of design to be done, there's still a lot of engineering, and there's still a lot of opportunities for communities to give input, to shape it. The only input we can't give after March is increase the cost. Um, we can always decrease the cost after that, and we can continue to take input for community use, so. I just want to note, tonight's the first night, it's not the last night, and you'll have a lot of opportunities to continue to say, I think you guys need to think about this, I think you really should make these modifications, and our goal is to keep the entire process open book and have regular meetings so that we can get it right.
Will you have kind of like a survey or voting on the option that you present in March, or in your warrant rather?
Our goal is to go in March with the best option that we've taken, the most input on, if this is the best solution. Um, I think trying to vote on several different options is gonna confuse people and it also will divide people. Let's get to the best option and put that one on the warrant article.
Is it, is it worth, just as an informal show of hands, because I I love to do this type of stuff for the moment? So based on what everybody here has seen, if we were, if we can flip back to option one, and this is just, if you're looking at these options, there's a, who here likes option one based on their thirty thousand foot perspective? I see one, one hand. Alright, if we go to option two. Option two. Well, that seems, uh, interesting, and option number, I guess we're gonna call it number four. We lost number four, and option number four. Okay. Not necessarily the the response I thought we were gonna get, but always interesting to to see, so.
Thank you so much for coming out.
Yeah, and certainly in that regard, folks, um, we appreciate that end of it, and we're gonna wrap up and and let these gentlemen go home to their families, and then we'll start our our regular meeting here momentarily, so why don't we take a five-minute recess? Does that work?
Thank you, everyone. Yeah, I think it did, it just wasn't close enough.
Alright, folks, I'd like to call the meeting to an end here, we're gonna get back to it. Alright, first item up. Can I have to send you some?
Those are the last five minutes.
Alright, folks, we'll call the meeting back to an end here at, uh, we have seven oh five. Uh, first item up, the minutes of October twentieth, what is the wish of the board? Book is written by T G, segment by Nate Oxnard, do we have any amendments to the minutes?
Yes, I have a statement, a question.
Where are you, sir?
I don't know where it is, but there's a, there's a language summarizing my motion that I made, which was in the middle of second, uh, page three, it looks like. Is that it? Yeah, um, and it says, applying masks into the future school until a vaccine becomes available to children, that was not my wish, and it was until, um, students have the opportunity to be fully vaccinated. My which I advanced, and then I, we could actually, I mean, if that's what I was going to use, so that would be after, after.
Can you say it one more time, sorry, until children have?
Uh, until, until, until the kid being entered has been fully, have the opportunity before the vaccine is.
Opportunity, okay.
Not until vaccines can be given available.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, do we have any other changes to the minutes? Okay, so, all in favor of the minutes as amended, please signify by saying aye. 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 Any opposed? Seeing none, the minutes pass. Alright, next up, we have agenda review, I'm going to insert a in between E and F. We're in general, oh, I'm sorry, well, I'm on a general view, we're gonna jump back to public comments in one second. Between E and F, we are going to discuss a fire alarm with, and was there any other items that the board members wanted to add? Okay, so that being said, sorry, folks, you're getting out of order. Uh, public comments, and who can ask, we have a fairly heavy agenda tonight, so if you could please keep your comments to two or three minutes, that would be appreciated. Uh, other than that, if anybody has any public comments, now would be the opportunity to make them. Yep. And I am gonna ask Nate to run a timer tonight, we are, we do have a couple of things we have to take care of later on in the meeting, so we're gonna be talking as any.
Greg Whitmore, North Road. So you know why I'm here. Two months of an abusive mask policy with no one in sight. Uh, it's becoming clear that you're seeing the public as an annoyance coming to these meetings. Right, when I go home and I I I watch afterwards the discussion after the public comments are over, you don't want me to be talking, and I mean, you're clearly not listening to my concerns. Um, you have your own agendas. Now, the school board is elected by the public, and your job is to represent the public, not to represent your own interests. And the public has been coming to you every school board meeting, making their concerns very clear, but we're not being taken seriously. I feel like that will probably change tonight. So, the last meeting, uh, you finally made some honest comments, which was great. You push masks because you're worried about being sued. Does that sound about right? But you literally said that, which is crazy to me, to think that that's what it comes down to. You're worried about being personally sued, so you force this upon the students and the staff at the school. One of you said that by law, you have to follow NHSS guidelines, hence the key word, guidelines. So you also finally came out and said, you're not really worried about the kids getting sick, because it's clearly evident after eighteen months, the kids don't really get sick. You're worried about them bringing it home and passing it on to others. Well, vaccine's been around for quite a while. The others have been vaccinated, the others are protected. So when will this end? What could possibly be the endgame? Do I have any faith that the plan for allowing tiny little kids to get vaccinated, which is terrifying to me? Okay, but allowing them to get vaccinated, do I, in, you know, eight weeks from now, whenever it is, do I think you're gonna stop then and say that the masks are gone? I tell you, I, these two months have have opened my eyes, right? And I don't, I don't have any trust. It's unfortunate. This is gonna be a long eight years. So, the word vindictive came to mind immediately when I watched that last meeting. I felt that was just a vindictive decision to to push it off like that, to push it off until potentially next year. I mean, how, I mean, how else? I mean, it's basically, say, you saying, we don't want to deal with this anymore, we're sick of it, we're gonna push out a deadline so far out, it's such a a crazy hurdle, but that's it.
Sir, I brought it along on time.
You got it, I'll wrap it up.
Thank you.
Alright, so, please listen to our concerns. We're here for a reason. You know, this is a, this is why I come here, this is why a lot of these people come here. We want to be taken seriously. Uh, by the way, how did Dover get onto a list of potential high schools? Bo, how about we cart the kids ten minutes up the road to a fantastic school? I don't want my child sitting on a bus for an hour going to a school. Don't get lured in by, you know, potentials for like CRTC programs that are offered extraordinarily far away. When we have a fantastic option right around the corner, okay, please, keep that in mind. Right, and don't, I mean, come on, let's let's be serious when we we get to things like that, alright? Alright, I'm out of time. Thank you. See you next time.
Do we have any additional comments?
Hi, I'm Bobby Anne, I live on Cobrown Road. Um, at our last school board meeting, Jeff asked for help with grassroots marketing. I emailed the board on October twenty-second, inquiring about the job and the details you needed. I have not heard back. I have over fourteen years' experience in local marketing, and I have many happy clients in New Hampshire, Massachusetts, Maine, and beyond. Um, I'm offering free services, so you can save on your budget if you need. Um, if you're serious about needing help, I'm here for you. Um, moving on, when asked to give an update on our town's high school issues during both of the last meetings, Nate commented, they're working on it. Who's they? That's like your job, isn't it? Um, Zach suggested touring another school besides Concord High, and I appreciate that because there's been months of no progress. Have you toured Cobrown yet? I know you mentioned you wanted to. Um, did you know that Cobrown is ranked twenty-ninth best in New Hampshire, whereas Concord is only forty-eighth? Not to mention it's twenty to thirty minutes closer, which will in turn reduce our bus fees. Did you notice that Cobrown does not wear masks? They do not mandate masks. They are believers of parental choice, and they're excelling academically, mentally, and physically. Why don't you want the best for our kids? Your number one reason for denying our community's petition for our special meeting in reference to RSA one nine seven two was that we didn't understand how legislation works, yet you're abiding by similar RSAs at tonight's meeting on the agenda. I just thought that was pretty funny. Your defense was that it would send the town the wrong message and make us think that our town could govern itself. We live in New Hampshire, it's in the constitution that we have the right to vote on things. You also mentioned that our special meeting would cost too much money. The board is all volunteer, we already pay Patty Sherman more than a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars a year for her salary, no matter how many meetings she's attending. So what right do you have to judge what fundraising and volunteers we could have for our special meeting? You didn't even consider that. Perhaps that it's time the board should educate themselves on local legislation and get to know their community. At our last school board meeting, it was also mentioned multiple times that parents don't complain about the school's drug policy. In turn, Nate doesn't understand why parents have the right to refuse any other health-related policies the board may make up. Might I remind you that for the first twenty years cigarettes were available, doctors actually prescribed them? The doctors that you trust and you look to, from nineteen thirty to nineteen fifty, prescribed the very cigarettes that cause cancer today, and they were allowed in public schools. Doctors may tell you to do something like smoke or mask up, but that's Doctors may tell you to do something like smoke or mask up, but that doesn't mean that it's healthy for everyone. Just because you idolize current doctors and make elaborate claims to try to control the nation does not mean that they won't be sing- I know.
You're right.
I know, I got you. They won't be singing a different tune years from now. Facts. Masks make our children breathe extremely unhealthy carbon dioxide levels all day long. Fact number two, masks are only 10% effective if worn properly, and they are 100% child abuse. Fact number three, your mandate is not a law. Fact number four, your community will not be silenced. We'll be seeing you in Superior Court very soon. Our case against you and your unlawful decision to deny our special meeting was approved, and you've been served.
Additional comments from anybody in the community? Sir? If we can capture your name, sir, for the minutes, please.
Bill Carbonell.
Thank you, sir.
On South Avenue, North Road. I'm going to comment on the last two speakers. I think the mask policy of this school is appropriate. All the scientific information we have says that it is necessary. It should happen. And why not? We have a responsibility, not only for our own, but for the others in this room and their children. And that is really important. And I, you know, I was very, very disappointed to hear that the barbarians have threatened each and every one of the school board members.
Sir, I am, I am gonna, just because we have tried through all these meetings to keep a very civil tone with everybody that we disagree with.
I was in a civil tone.
In a civil term.
Barbarian is the word you didn't like.
Yeah, and I'd prefer we not speak to the people of the community.
Well, I disagree in spades with the approach of those two people. I want my kids to be protected, my grandchildren, to be protected against others. Okay, and they're not, unless we use masks, they're not somewhat protected. And it is true that, you know, the little kids, we, we think, are not as prone to it. I've noticed that the cases in Deerfield have increased substantially in the last four or five weeks, at least doubled. Okay, I don't know who those cases were, whether there are any kids involved or not. And I don't know what they're talking about when they say kids. The state does not make the distinction between the 5 to 11 and the 12 to 18. And they need to do that. I'm very disappointed with the state as well. Those are my comments. I still vote for masks.
Thank you, sir.
If I can get up, I'll be all set.
Do you have additional comments for anybody in the community? Brian Spohr, the resident.
I'm sorry, Mr. Brian.
That's a duty yet unassigned, Brian. Is he standing up?
Anita Waitz. Kimberly Black, Evening House Hill. Week seven, and my child hasn't been in school, but you're probably not counting, and not one who could possibly comprehend the burden your mask policy has imposed on my child and my family. Never in my wildest dreams did I envision that this is what fighting for my child's rights to an education would look like, or that it'd start in kindergarten. But I have to have faith, a glimmer of hope, that sometime soon you'll see you're on the wrong side of history and change. There's never a wrong time to do the right thing, and the right thing for the students, the parents, the faculty and staff is to make masking voluntary. You have no jurisdiction to make medical choices for anyone else other than yourselves. However, you are supposed to control the safety and health measures of the school, starting with a properly functioning fire alarm. Your blatant disregard to the malfunctions of the alarm system have put everyone in this school at risk for much too long and placed an unnecessary burden on our fire department. You can improve the air quality in this building simply by placing HEPA filters in classrooms. These filters filter the same size viral particles, 0.3 microns, as N95 masks, which are the filtration standard any other mask type is held up against. The air filters would also filter mold, dust, pollen, and bacterial particulate. This would directly contribute to a healthier environment for everyone all the time. You can improve the safety of our high schoolers by immediately acting upon high school choice. You've already forced the burden of transportation onto the parents by failing to contract with a bus company that can fulfill their contractual duties. Dale has fallen further and further behind every year. It's unacceptable. Broaden the high school choice to wherever a family chooses. Student success should be your overall goal, and our high school students' education shouldn't be for sale to the lowest bidder. It's time for you all to do better. Remove the masks and step up or step down. Thank you.
Additional comments from any other community members? Jack Ochman, Lang Road.
Hey. Well, Jack Ochman, Lang Road. Hey, I did the school board thing for a few years, about 30 years ago, and I know it's just a really hard job, and I just wanna say thank you for the work you do and you know, the pressures that you feel. And, um, I know you're doing what you think is right about masks. And it makes sense to me. I think I'd be in the same place, or in your shoes. But I know it's hard to sustain under the pressures we're under. Anyway, just thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. I'm, I'm glad to hear that. The comments tonight have been pretty civil. That's really, it's, it's the way it should be, you know, people get to step up and say what they think. And, um, I think carrying on the process like this, that's what works. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack. Additional comments from any other community members? Eric. Sir?
Uh, Cooper, North Road. Um, every time I come here, it just, it, it, it becomes apparent that this is just an oppressive regime. Um, I hear about all the negative things that you guys force us to do and force upon us. Uh, and maybe I'm just lucky, but I, I guess I don't notice that. Um, immunizations. We have to show you that to go to school. But somehow, when we ask someone to wear a mask, all of a sudden, there's a concept of medical freedom. But once again, here's our shot record, not a problem. Um, there's accusations. Guys, these are live streams. These videos are live streams. They're also archived on YouTube. If you log into YouTube, it's free. You can click on the settings. You can look at the transcripts. You can actually read it, click on it, and go back to the timestamp. So when you hear these declarations of they said this or they said that, go back and watch the video. And I'd also like to point out that if you start a sentence with fact, it doesn't necessarily mean it's a fact with what you ended with. There's declarations that are made all the time. That doesn't mean that they're necessarily true. And there's a lot of whiplash that goes back and forth. Don't trust the scientists, but at the same time, look at the studies where the HEPA filters, you know, filter out 0.3 microns. We'll believe these scientists. At the end of the day, what we're trying to do is come to a consensus, is what the best thing to do for the children and for the community. Universally, it's wear a mask, vaccinate your children, vaccinate yourself. Right now, we don't have the luxury of vaccinating our children, so you guys have made a decision, a difficult one, an unpopular one, to ask our children to wear a mask while in school. I don't think that's very oppressive. We have bigger intentions.
We also asked you to sit at the table to speak through, and you refused to.
Sir?
Every board member.
Sir? We have kept this respectful for a number of weeks. I'm gonna ask that we continue to maintain that. You're welcome to have comments. When this gentleman is complete.
How come everybody sits up front except for this guy every meeting?
His voice projects clearly, sir, and if you wanna make your comments from the back of the room, I'll like, do that as well. But please, we have maintained a respectful tone for weeks and weeks on end. I'm not gonna have that end. Please continue, sir.
Yeah, so, um, I don't go up to the communal microphone during the viral pandemic, because I don't feel the, the need to cohabitate with a microphone, especially when the whole point of going up to the front with a microphone is to make sure that I'm heard. I'm obviously heard, because every time I speak, though I'm quiet during every other interaction, I get interrupted. The end result is, once again, you made an unpopular decision, and it's for the safety of the kids. Thank you.
Additional comments?
Patrice Killam. And I am a citizen of the community, and I am a staff member here. I am due to retire this year from the school after almost 20 years. And I appreciate the fact that you decided to make one decision, and even in place, four masks, that keeps stability, consistency in all of us. For the parents, everyone, even those that object, they know there's a consistency that their children know what to expect. Um, I think in these times when there's so, so much upheaval and so much going on, that we can all do better to just sort of try to keep up and stay with that consistency and try to support each other in this thing, and I think you guys are trying to support the community and the children and do the best for them. And yes, they can catch it, and they do catch it. And they get sick. Some get really sick and don't make it. Some bring it home, and their people don't make it. Um, so I just am glad that you did it, having lost several people in the past few months. I'm, it really don't wanna lose anybody else, especially not kids. I don't want them to be sick. I don't want them to have fog brain. So I really would rather have them either wear their masks and/or not be here altogether. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to make comments before the board? Not, we are gonna move on. If there's anybody else, I'm in the last call. All right. Thank you to everybody that made comments tonight. Uh, as always, uh, we try to allow everybody to have an opportunity to voice their opinions in a polite, respectful manner, and I appreciate that this community has been doing that uh, these past weeks while we have been having discussions that I don't think anybody's wanted to have. So thank you all for participating. I certainly appreciate it, and thank you for providing the feedback to us. With that being said, we have some additional items we're gonna be moving on to. Um, I do have a review of correspondence. Uh, we had a number of emails. Um, the theme has been consistent regarding support for, for masks and support for optional masking, and, and that has been a fairly consistent theme. Um, I have felt like, and I would like to ask, I guess, for an opinion from the board and possibly an opinion from the superintendent, that it may be, it may, may or may not be, and, and this well certainly isn't anything I would be enacting tonight, but should we consider adding the emails that we received that are addressed to the board in their entirety to the meeting minutes so that they become part of the record? Um, and so that is a question I think I would flow it out to the board members, and it's not necessarily a question I'm looking for response back tonight, but, um, any emails that come to the board, uh, or a board member that do not contain student-specific information technically or subject to public review, and the thought process behind that is, is should we just be including them with the minutes right out of the gate? So if any of the board members have feedback on that, I'd love to hear it. Uh, again, not something I'm looking to win at tonight, but maybe it'll come in our future conversations up the road if we wanna have it. Nate?
Um, I mean, in one sense, the emails that we receive are, I would say, from some people in lieu of a public comment here at the meeting, so it could be looked at as sort of the same thing, as comparable to a public comment at the meeting. Um, unless they are intending for them to be confidential or private emails, um, I would be we'd be able to tell the difference between the intent of it being confidential or not, and is that such a thing? Is there any such thing as a confidential email in to, to, to an elected official anyway?
No.
No such thing?
No, I'm wondering.
So unless it contains student-specific information, I believe it is subject to public review, correct?
Yes, and it's between board, it's to board members.
Yes, so I don't know. It's, it's something I've been thinking about. I feel like the people that are sending emails, I feel like some of them are sending them, and they wanna be heard, and I I wonder if that is a, an appropriate mechanism to allow them to be addressed to a patch of a record, i.e. on the minutes. Um, if any of the board members have commentary on it, great. If not, it's something maybe we can, uh, kick around in our next meeting as, uh, as another thought, uh, to bring as a chance to stay on. Nate?
Is there something stated there at the N H S P A or some other body would have an opinion on? I mean, it tells a relatively new thing, right? I mean, not super new, but relatively speaking. I wonder whether there's any sort of, I don't know, precedent?
No, I don't, I don't, I've not heard any.
This is what happens at 4:00 in the morning. You don't know, I just say, yeah, right, just, really. To think of it. Uh, any other commentary from the board regarding some emails that we received? No? Jeff?
Yeah, I mean, clearly.
There's clearly something.
I just want people to be able to also communicate with us in confidence, not in confidence, because obviously it is subject to public record. I don't know, point to point, I guess, that's.
Uh, simply at this moment, that's me floating something that, this is one of my 4:00 AM when I wake up, and I'm sitting here looking at the dog and thinking, these are the things that go through my head. All right.
I'm just gonna say that, um, I probably need to want it some more. The, the, the more I feel like me and the board can, um, hear people avenues to feel heard is good, so in my like, in this, the initial thought is like, hmm, oh, yeah, but I, I think I would need to think about it a little more.
Maybe that's something that, uh, for anybody that's here that wants to provide maybe some feedback or insights and comments at our next meeting, what are your thoughts on, you know, providing those emails to the record? I don't know. It's, it's like, it's a 4:00 AM thing. I wake up at 4 o'clock every day, and my mind starts doing something, and that was one of the things that rattled around in it. So anyhow, we're gonna move on. Uh, I believe I'm going to ask, uh, Nick Lawrence and Chris Koofus to come up and chat with us. Chris is here as well. This is gonna be regarding winter sports for DCS as well as the Bucks and Rec. For those of you that are unaware, Chris Koofus is the athletics director. It's, uh, another hat he decided to don since he don't let him leave the building ever. He figured it was something else he'd be doing while he was here. And, uh, he has stepped up to fill the, the shoes that Cindy Hansen, uh, vacated when she, uh, went looking for sunnier weather. So, gentlemen, what do you got?
Oh, thank you very much for having us today. Appreciate it. Um, our current mask policy for sports indoors is coaches, referees, and players sitting on the bench will wear masks. Players out on the court at the time, it is completely optional. If another school mandates that their students, regardless whether at home court or visiting, wears masks, we're, we're fine with that. We're not gonna, um, say anything against that. But at, at this point, unless the board decides now or at a later date, we allow the players on court not to wear masks.
Lawrence?
Chris, I'm just out of curiosity, do you happen to know how many, uh, schools that we play require their students to wear masks while they're playing?
Um.
I mean, I know you haven't been through that winter season yet, but have you gotten correspondence?
Uh, just from volleyball, I believe out of maybe the eight home games that we had, uh, maybe half of the teams required their, the visiting team to wear masks. The other half made it optional to their players also.
Okay.
Um, mandates from the other schools have not come out for the basketball season yet. We're just, um, basketball season is kind of in its beginning stage of getting the schedule out and who can and who won't be able to host the team this year, so I'm sure that'll follow up in a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Question, concern I've heard, and it makes sense, is that, you know, if there is a mask mandate on the court, that mouthguards are obviously an issue and a concern. Anyone that's ever worn a mouthguard knows it's strictly an upper mask. So what I've heard is that if, uh, masks are going to be required, that mouthguards will not be required. Is that correct?
That, um, as far as, that's a ruling that came out last year. My daughter played high school ball, and that was their mandate. If you have to wear a mask or you are gonna wear a mask, mouthguards were not required at that time because of difficulty of breathing. So, uh, as if the N H I A A decides on mouthguards in, then we'll have to go with that, or the school board wants to come up with an opinion on that, we'll follow that.
Nate, um, what happened last year regarding mouthguards and masks? Because last year, everybody was wearing masks, is my understanding.
Uh, yep, um, in the high school, we.
No, sorry, in here, in, at DCS.
Uh, you know what? I was an athletic director at the time.
Right.
Um, so I do not know what they were doing.
And I am, I'm honestly drawing a blank.
As I understand it, they were. As I understand it, they were not wearing mouthguards.
I believe that was the, at least for the girls' coach, that was what I believe was relayed at the, the meeting last week. Brian?
That's correct.
Or Chris or somebody? So I think the question before us as a board is, is, Chris has obviously notified us as how he would like it to be. Obviously, Mr. Lawrence is also looking for some little level of direction as we left him at our last meeting with the, to be determined on that aspect of it. So the board needs to ultimately decide if we are going to ask the players, and are going to, if we're going to allow the players to not wear masks while at court or not, and if we should make a distinction between the middle school kids who have the option of being vaccinated versus the younger kids, which unfortunately affect your group more so, Nick, than ours. But, you know, if there's a differentiation there. So that would be, I think, where the problematical to start the discussion would be.
Yeah. On that note, so I would make a motion that we allow the middle school, seventh and eighth grade basketball teams to play per Chris Kofus. Sorry, I butcher it every time.
It's okay.
Recommendation in that we require parks and rec to be masked as long as, as long as the current mask policy is in place at DCS.
Okay. So that's a motion to allow the, so, and I want to pause for one second. Do we have a second for discussion or?
Oh, second for discussion.
Okay. So my question for you, Chris, is the middle school girls' team constitutes, is it six, seven, oh, I'm sorry, middle school teams, I apologize. I think girls, my daughter. But that would be six, seven, and eighth grade that is eligible to play?
Correct.
Okay. And so from an age standpoint, knowing, you know, sixth grade is when I think a lot of the children turn, 12-ish? 11, 12-ish, right? So I think, Jeff, the question for you there is that you still run into that, that threshold as part of the discussion of the, you know, ineligible to be vaccinated versus eligible to be vaccinated? Just to complicate things.
I would make an amendment to my motion if I can.
Why don't we rescind it? This may be easier. Let's have the conversation first.
Okay, I'll rescind my second.
I'll rescind my motion. All right, so let's have the conversation, I think, first maybe. Nick?
What are you proposing to happen during practice when presumably a bunch of athletes will be on the floor running around? Does that constitute wearing a mask or not wearing a mask? And are you going to have a whole team not wearing a mask because they're on the court?
If they're on the court and the coach has just given instructions, simple instructions, then I think masks should be on. If the girls are sitting on the sideline and they're having three-on-three, five-on-five, my personal opinion is that masks should still be worn to keep the safety of all the students.
So is, is your opinion just across the board? We should require masks for the season?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a thing from Chris that this year we require masks.
Exactly. Go ahead. I, I agree with that. And I, and I see this as a different situation than volleyball because volleyball, I think, is, is, it's easier to maintain a, you know, three-foot distance like we're doing with the rest of our school right now. And maybe it's more, maybe it's four or five feet when you're playing volleyball. I have not seen a middle school volleyball game recently. But compared to basketball, where you are right in the face of some of your opponent or your teammate, and there's a lot closer contact. So I would, I would put this in a very different category than volleyball. And so I, I would agree that I think that as long as our school has a policy about wearing masks, we should be consistent with our athletes as well.
So I just happen to pull up just quickly because I've looked before in general, but not on the CDC website about sports programs. So, and on the CDC website regarding sports programs, frequently asked questions and asked about the recommendation. And the top of the screen says cases are extremely high and hospitals are seeing increased hospitalizations and deaths. It says to decrease your risk of getting and spreading COVID, CDC recommends that you do not engage in close contact sports with people that you do not live with you. If you choose to play close contact or indoor sports, reduce your risk by getting vaccinated when a vaccine is available to you, wearing a mask, playing outside, staying at least six feet away from others, and avoiding crowds.
Do you have thoughts?
So I guess one of the questions I have is if we go require masks, would we tie it to our?
Existing policy?
School, yeah, existing policy. Once vaccines have become eligible to, you know, it's possible that it is be vaccinated if we change our mask policy at the school. The optional, you know, would that then change with our basketball policy as well? I, I like the idea of tying together, I think, the schools and the athletic.
Yes, I agree with that.
All right, so that sounds like more of a general direction. It's a, really what we're looking to do is we're looking to tie that the mask policy for athletics is going to be tied directly to the school's standing mask policy. I think we should make a difference. All right, does that require a motion, Patty? Or does the policy that's in place cover it?
Up to you.
I'll move that our winter sports season follows the school's mask policy.
Okay. Move, Renate Oxnard, seconded by Jeff Kelly, that we follow the, we ask, or not ask, but the athletics department use the existing mask policy for the sports season. Nick, the board apply to you obviously as well, for your players. Any additional discussion? Do I do have a thought of anything else? Questions, gentlemen, before we act on this?
We know the latest timeline of when the vaccines will be available.
You know, it's funny, I was, I was at the pharmacy the other day talking to the pharmacist getting my flu shot. And I asked him, and I know according to the pharmacist and Rady and Raymond, they have already quartered the vaccines for the younger kids and it is inbound. And I tried to make an appointment for my son, but he wouldn't let me do it until it physically landed on the ground. But Monday. It's scheduled Monday. So.
But it's going to be six weeks or?
Five weeks potentially to allow a substantial blowout. But the good news is, is it sounds like we're very close to being in a better position than we were three, four, or five months ago. And I certainly think this board is, is going to look hopefully to readdress everything once vaccinations are readily available to our younger population. Additional questions? Nick or Chris? I know we're kind of handing you both a bag of lemons here, but something's definitely coming in. All right, that being said, the board needs to act on the current motion. So any other questions from the board, the comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you all.
Nick, thank you for coming and sitting through that. I appreciate your time tonight. I'm sure you want to go home.
I appreciate it.
All right. Good night now. Chris? You two should get to know each other. All right. Mr. Chris? So why don't we talk about our beloved fire alarm panel, which I just want to add, we have gone every possible moment of use out of maybe about a week after.
Do you want to recap of the, from start to today?
If you're going back all 20 years, I think you can skip about 19 and a half more.
Okay. Last Thursday, we had a surprise fire alarm conducted by the chief, Matt Fisher. It failed due to communication not leaving the building. Called in the fire alarm company, Hackworth Fire. They gave us a solution at that time by bypassing the wire into our regular alarm system. It seemed to work at that time.
When you say alarm system, you're saying security versus fire?
Correct, security alarm system.
Just want to make sure everybody's.
It seemed to work for that one test. Later that night, it went off and the fire alarm was, our security system was notified of a fire, which police and fire responded to. At that time, it was kind of, there was no fire, no activation of the alarm system. The fire alarm panel, at that time, the chief again pulled the station to see what was going to happen. No communication outside of the building to central alarm and no devices on the second floor activated. So it was just like nothing was happening on the second floor. Monday morning, called in our fire alarm company and they installed a cellular communication, which does not use a phone line. It's purely cellular. We tested it twice and that is up and running. If we pulled the sta, a pole station right now, I'm sure they would get the alarm, which would be passed on to Deerfield Fire. We tested the upstairs twice on Tuesday because it came back and trouble. We also have a fault on our fire alarm panel, which we can't get to clear. We've discovered two things on the board that is giving us the problem with current fuse. It's not a pull and plug in fuse. It's actually soldered right into the board. So let's say you're going to tamper with a fire alarm panel board is a no-no. We are lucky enough that our contractor found a board that is ordered. I don't have a lead time on it now, but I'm hoping to see, receive word hopefully tomorrow of the lead time and we can move forward with that. Right now, the contractor is, he feels the board is the trouble and it's not something with a, a device. Because when we tested it twice on Tuesday, everything worked correctly. We had no, no issues at all. So discovering the burnt fuse and whatever else might be going on with the board that we can't see, we're hoping that that will take care of the problem. If not, then we need to have a discussion at a later date about putting in a temporary panel just to cover our 16 zones until we can make plans for a brand new system to be installed.
Okay. So we have requested the engineering firm to have the fire protection engineers start drafting up plans for an IRP for us to update the fire systems in this building. So that work had been gone, had been ongoing, but obviously has been accelerated to this point. And so that is running in tandem. So at the moment, our current conditions are, and I'm, I'm going to say that presumably because I see Chief Fisher looking over there and another gentleman that appears to be a fireman, is that we are currently on fire watch.
That is correct.
With the fire department.
That is correct.
And that situation is going to continue until at minimum a replacement board arrives, is installed, and tested to their satisfaction.
Clears all the troubles that we're having and yes, is up 100% operational.
Chief Fisher, is that accurate? Do you mind if I involve the chief here, Paul?
Please, I agree.
Yeah.
Here's the judge, jury, and executioner on this one, so.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so a few large areas of my concern over the past week have been a lack of notification to our dispatch center. That seems to have been fixed by the cell, cell dialer. That's very common these days. How the, the alarm system was communicating through the security system, that was allowable back when the building was built. That is not modern fire code and that is a fire code violation. We've kind of made that correction, so we're good there. Just as concerning, maybe a little more, when we were here Thursday morning, we did the unannounced fire drill. The first time we did it, the whole school evacuated. Fantastic. That's when we realized our dispatch center was never notified of the alarm. Did it again. At that time, the whole second floor of the building did not alarm. That is a big problem. As Chris alluded to, a line company came out, did some repairs. We thought we were in good shape. About 1:00 Saturday morning, we were dispatched to this facility, not by an alarm system, it was an issue for us, but by being requested by the Deerfield Police Department through our dispatch center. There was an issue where your security system would not be alarmed because it saw a fault on the, the panel for the fire alarm. Now, the fault on the fire panel has been going on for a number of years now. We have made the board in the school aware of this for a couple of years when your annual fire safety inspection, it's been noted. That night, I came over to the same pole station right by the exit, going out to the rear of the building, pulled the pole station, the alarm activated. The second floor again did not alarm. So there is a consistent issue in the system somewhere. Do I honestly believe the board that's going to come in and get, is going to solve the problem? I don't. I don't have confidence in that. I, if it does, fantastic. That panel needs to be repaired, replaced, fixed immediately. Should have been done a couple of years ago. Here we are. It needs to get done. I won't be releasing any restrictions of a fire watch until I'm satisfied that whatever correction is made, temporary panel is installed, permit panel is installed, is safe, reliable, and will activate. Another concern I have by just with the second floor not notifying, does that mean if I pull a pole station on the second floor, is that going, is it not going to work? Is it just a notification or is it the pole station as well? There's some real problems that need to be identified and addressed. So I, I'm glad to hear we're, we're moving forward. We're getting parts where we're working on it. But I can't emphasize enough, I, I'm glad an engineering firm's involved. I brought that suggestion forward a few years ago through some meetings with Chris and even back to his predecessor. Let's upgrade the fire alarm panel. We can do a multi-year phased process of other activities in the building for bringing the rest of the system up to code. Well, here we are in November of 2021 and I have to staff my department here during the day or anytime the building's in use. I, I believe everybody gets the gravity of the situation, but we, it needs to get resolved. I understand there's, in, in my personal life and my work, parts are delayed and it's just the, the world we live in these days. But the most, you know, whatever we can do to expedite would be greatly appreciated.
So, Jeff, go ahead.
How long has Hackworth been our secure, or vendor for this fire alarm panel?
Uh, since this August.
Should we consider, given the severity of the situation, getting another alarm company to take a look at this and see if they can troubleshoot it?
And or this, Sarah, I mean, did Hackworth give you an idea when they just put a temporary panel in, approximation on cost? If we just said?
Seven thousand dollars for a temporary panel. And this temporary panel is just a temporary panel. It's enough just to carry our 16 zones with no room for anything else. It's.
Are we paying your?
Yes.
Department personnel?
Yep.
How fast is it going to take us to get to $7,000?
So I did go to this school, so I have to try to do my math. Swear.
That stings, there, Chief Fisher.
I'm, it's, it's $25 an hour plus $5 a minute. So if we just use $25 an hour, let's say it's a 10-hour day, it's 250 bucks. A week is, what, 1250?
We're, we're working there a week.
Five, six weeks.
So if you recall, Hackworth and say install a temporary panel, when would they be able to do that?
I can, I don't know that. I can find that out really quick.
So I am in an effort to resolve the problem, going to make a motion that we ask Chris to contact Hackworth and have them install a temporary panel at the estimated cost of $7,000. We have had the funds set aside for updating the system for a while. It may be a temporary update, but it's certainly a necessary one.
Second.
And I'll look for a second. So we have a motion by myself, a second by Mr. Kelly. Do we have any additional discussion regarding this?
Yeah, I would like to, again, amend to your motion.
Sure.
That Hackworth can't supply in adequate time. We reach out to other alarm vendors in the area that could possibly furnish it sooner.
I know the town has a relationship with the company as well, so it may be worth reaching out to them. Right, is the town using one company for everything?
Yes.
And there's, I know there's a number of them scattered throughout the state, but I was most certainly saying just find out if you can get here and keep on with it and let's just not talk about it.
Because we've been on this road before. If it's estimated at 7,000 and you approve 7,000, it comes back at 8,000, we're now two weeks out. So can we optimize it to whatever the price is?
So, did you make, was your?
I made an amendment, so yeah.
So amend your amendment to include $10,000, please.
Whichever security company can get here the quickest in an amount to spend up to an amount of $10,000. Whichever security company can get here the quickest in an amount to spend up to an amount of ten thousand dollars. Second.
All right, all in favor of the amendment to the motion?
All right.
All right. All in favor of the motion? Fix the problem.
So just to add, right? Going down this road, fixing the panel, putting in a temporary one. There's no guarantee that it's gonna fix the issues on the second floor or anywhere else in this building. If there's still issues on the second floor and anywhere in the building, not getting notification, pole panels aren't working, the fire watch is still in place.
So if you notify us, if there's something else and where you can provide additional funds, we will have another meeting, we will address it.
Fantastic. I just don't want the idea of temporary panel come Friday and everything works.
Tell the contractors to make sure the temporary panel works.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, second.
I mean.
We should really have a troubleshoot the entire. I mean, I assume Hackworth has come out and troubleshoot the entire system and tried to.
Yes, our starting point is at the faulty board.
Yeah.
We have, I don't know how many devices on the second floor.
I would ask that they put in something non-proprietary.
Correct.
That we are not rolled, doped into some contractor. I want part of it down the road, if this thing is living there for a year or two, that we are able to actually continue to repair.
Certainly.
Does that give you enough leeway, sir?
It does.
Chief Fisher, are you satisfied that we're taking enough action to hopefully remedy the situation?
On a temporary basis, yes. This is not a permanent solution and a year or two is not something I'm in favor of.
The engineers are working on it.
Remove a fire watch and I I've heard comment that it's gonna be tied into the expansion of the building. That's not acceptable. Uh this is a a problem that needs to to move forward as quickly as possible. Yes, we need a temporary solution. We need to, you know, make sure everything's working, but as kind of the the architects kind of alluded to, there are quite a bit of deficiencies. And one of my main roles here in our town is is with the fire department and um we need, we need to make sure our fire alarm system is is up to date and
Conversations we've had with them is that what we install can be done prior to the addition being constructed. It will be installed with the core site that we're going to need to include X number of additional zones. So there'll be room for expansion.
I'm gonna throw out a whole bunch of terminology that makes no sense to any of us about it, doing things and stuff and building magic, calling Google or whatever they do.
But is that still dependent on the on the bond passing?
No, no.
It's two different things, but it's, they're designing and working on it with the foresight that we're going to add X number of additional square feet and classrooms and all of that.
So if you're designing a system for this building, it would have the capacity to make the loading of any additions that we may add. Just so you're aware, so that that's an independent project with the foresight. If we were to expand the facility by X amount of square footage, then it would have the ability to handle that load as well. Because presumably a fire alarm panel has so many holes in it to run so many things and you just need to make sure it has enough holes going on with things.
But what is the timeline of that piece of the project? Because they were just saying years until this is filled.
That's a separate engineering exercise.
And are they working on it right now?
Yes. There's no questions, gentlemen? That was the friendliest call that we've ever had. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Hold on, no, no, I don't think this is.
Oh, okay, sorry.
This is more of a government question, you know, I I'm almost like, thank you, right?
But so then does that mean we need to, like, what is their timeline? And if this is a temporary thing, we don't wanna get two years down the road and, you know, not have it. So how we do, we need to make a motion right now and actually put together a new.
Running down.
Yeah, there's an engineering firm looking at it now. They didn't give me one today.
But they accelerated the process and they're gonna make one standard engineering manual for our workers. They don't find our address. Right. Okay. That brings us to fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Are you ready to do the budget? Patty, I would have passed those out. All right.
So, yeah, let's do this. Before we get started, um we've had conversations at the executive board level, but I don't know that we've had it at the full board level. Um we did lose half of our business office at the SAU and we have two other staff members that are having some personal emergencies to deal with. So our budgets are definitely behind. We typically, at your first meeting in November, have a complete budget we would look at. Um the budget at the building level and the facilities level is done. So you have lots of information to talk about tonight, but you won't be able to flip forward to see your bottom line. I know, I know that you love to do that. Um but at the next meeting, yeah, we will have um the salaries and the benefits, which is a big, big chunk of your budget that's missing. Just trying to work through and get everything down for all five districts. So that's to be followed up at the next meeting. So Mrs. Willie, um.
So we are basically absent staffing.
Yes, yes. So all your, all your building level stuff and your facility stuff is in there. So I think this is what he's gonna walk you through.
All right. So Willie, lead the charge.
Um, so we're going down from most of the lines that we have, starting at forty-six, I believe, is the front line that we would have. Get my red dot on this here. So we have line forty-six. Instructional equipment repair. Uh our music department is usually, that's a line for our music department to repair uh instruments and they have not had an increase in quite a few years. And over the last two years especially, have not been able to, have not gotten their instruments repaired or update or maintained. So there will be an increase in that line um bit. Line forty-nine, technology equipment repair. Uh this is for outside contractors for repairs that can't be done in-house. Looking at about a thousand dollars. We've been, we've been maintaining that line at a thousand dollars for some time now. Electronic software licensing. Uh there is an appendix for you that is handed out. It has the technology appendixes. That line includes um purchases for music, P E and library. It's many online subscriptions like Brain Pop, Headshot, uh Learning A-Z, Spelling City, Raz Kids, Star Hall, all of those things. So in the, I'm sorry, not in particular order, the appendixes that I put it out. But the tech twenty twenty-two, twenty-three starts with that electronic software licensing. You can see the number twenty-one, nine, seventy-one and next to it what that would include. Witness Graham, Humble Book, Pebble Go. Also for music, smart music, no flight soundtrack, a lot of these um educational software things we received, especially when we, when we went remote. Um we discovered a lot of things that the teachers really liked using and so we tried to incorporate, update and incorporate into our, um our, our repertoire. Um so there is a slight increase in that, in that department. We go to line number fifty-seven for general supplies. We have been able to, to, um thirty-five thousand dollars has been able to cover everything that we've needed for several years now. Um and then we start getting into some of the subject areas, uh foreign language, whole remainder sixteen hundred. Uh some things, some of the things that we purchased to add are the Scholastic News in French and Spanish, but also um materials that will make it, we have obviously beat that line this year. Um but we do have the line in there to buy the things that we need. Health is looking, health and wellness is looking for a little bit of an increase. Um our health and wellness teacher usually purchases what he needs with the two hundred dollars, but is looking to purchase some wellness books. So that's uh, so we did a slight increase there. Arts is holding the line at fifteen thousand. Guidance has not seen an increase for several years. We're on line seventy right now. Uh so they're looking to um increase for adjusted and adjust for rising costs from seven hundred to eight hundred. As you can see in math, uh they were able to budget out, um you know, we're in year four, I believe, of using the Eureka program, bringing into the middle school. They've been able to purchase the materials that they've needed in the past. So this will cover um supplies, materials, equipment that they need. Um they've got it all budgeted out and so there's a slight decrease in that area. Music, um the next line seventy-four, this is the line for their sheet music, yearly instruments. Um manipulatives, reeds, oils, cleaner swaps, things that they need for their supplies. And they are able, they, they are projecting that they only need about twenty-five hundred dollars. P E holds the line at about fifteen hundred dollars and they have replacement rotation for their P E equipment. Um they have it all lined out, what they need. Language arts um is looking at about fourteen-five. Um they are, just give me a moment to get mine. Um they're looking at some so I'm just getting my budget put here for E L A. Uh some take-home reading cart and little books for kindergarten. Um Words Their Way subscription. Um they have some other things in there for replacement books. Um middle school is looking to pilot an enrichment program. And so with a D C S book club for our middle school. So there's um slightly, looking to spend some um of that money for those things. Um science is a slight increase. Uh we're hoping, we've been, we wanted to do that this, this year as well, but we're hoping to give our middle schools, three middle school science teachers a s- uh sum of money and then divide the remainder of that amongst our K to five teachers. Um so that they can purchase some science, you know, people will supplies and things that they need. Uh we also are looking to do that in social studies. As you know, our middle school teachers are teaching social studies and they're needing some materials and supplies uh to increase the things that they have in their, for the social studies teaching. Um and they also, we also pay for Time Magazine and Scholastic News out of this line for the grade levels that purchase those. And so that's a pretty hefty, about three thousand dollars return. This technology supplies line, we've tried to get in it for a couple of years, but every time we fall into a default, we do not get it and drops back down to a dollar. And uh this is a supply line for our technology folks. Uh they, at this point, they dip into the general supplies. When they need to purchase things for the three printer, they need to get projector bulbs or headphones or um ink or paper, they, that, they have a lot of things that they need to purchase. Uh so we'd like to, we've been trying to get the fifteen hundred dollars in there now for a couple of years. Uh we'll go down to eighty-nine, line eighty-nine. Uh this is for computer repair parts. Um this is Bob's line for in-house repairs. And as you know, um one of Bob's favorite pastimes is cleaning, is fixing Chromebooks. He just loves it. He loves everything about it. He especially loves when the keyboard starts, stops working and he has to replace screens. That's always so fun for him. So, but costs have increased over the years and so we're looking for um a little bit of an increase there to cover those costs. Um and then the next line is for, oh, Mr. My voice.
So, um sorry, just on that Chromebook repair stuff, do you have any idea how much life he's extending out of the Chromebooks by repairing them?
Uh that's a great question. Um I mean, he gets them back up and running, so.
Yeah, I mean, so essentially right now, most students are traveling through sixth, seventh, eighth grade with the same Chromebook.
Okay.
So give or take.
Three plus years?
Three years, yeah.
I don't know that it's extending their life as much as it is keeping them alive when they, when they come in damaged.
Is it life support?
Yes. They definitely have a short lifespan, but it's even shorter when they get broken.
Okay. And how's that through the eighth grade year to them? Uh they're recycling, well, if they're in decent condition, they're go back to into somewhere along the line. Like give them to a sixth grader for another three years? Uh no, not that, no. They don't have that kind of lifespan.
That's a hall of glory, dude, you're a.
They, they usually just become, end up becoming parts or, you know, so. And technology is, you know, to the point where it's almost obsolete at that point.
Well, I was gonna, so I guess the, the, the question that leads to is, I'm sorry. But the, uh, the eight or the ten thousand dollars of repair parts for the Chromebooks, would that money be better spent or portion of that money be better spent just to add to the refresh of Chromebooks line? Are you spending a hundred dollars to repair, what's a hundred dollar Chromebook? Or should we spend that a hundred and fifty dollars or replace the Chromebook?
It, it's certainly been a discussion. I, and we've, we've gone back and forth with how to get that covered. I, I, it's worth a conversation, I guess. They don't, I can't, I can't give you a solid answer, but it's definitely a conversation and I'll let, I'll let our tech folks know if you're asking about that.
And then it's, Bob's spending time on that, what is he not getting to, that might be more valuable.
Or is it just the value of the time and drive?
For sure. So I'm down on line ninety-one for software regularized program. This is where we get our Windows upgrade, Google Enterprise. So it's different than educational software that teachers are using. Um Eureka accounts are falling to this line. Again, if you look at the proposed technology um appendix, you can see where that, where that information is or what is being spent on. I'm going down to line number ninety-six. Originally, last year, we had the band risers in this, in this line. We had a phase for the library in this line. We were able to use um how generously the board gave us money last year to get those things. So we um were able to drop that line down to twenty-five hundred dollars and have talked to our um maybe the two music teachers, Melissa and Michael, to see if they would like to purchase some new band instruments. We thought maybe we'd get, be able to get, you know, I don't know, five or ten. And Brian went up to speak to Melissa and, or Michael, and you know how much new instrument costs?
Roughly a thousand dollars.
Yeah, roughly a thousand dollars.
Do things.
Yeah. So we're looking at new used band instruments.
Yeah, so we figured twenty-five hundred dollars would get us maybe a couple of nice new used instruments to replace some of the instruments that might be falling apart. Um and that was.
Can I ask you another question about the, the, so you have some, you have a repair line for instruments?
Yeah, so those are the current instruments that we do have, to get them cleaned and repaired and.
And these are, because there's also students, when they come into band, like in sixth grade or fifth grade, fourth grade, they have the opportunity to, I mean, they, they have their own. So these are instruments that are used during music class. These aren't. No, these, these are, we do supply instruments sometimes to families who can't afford that and we seem to be seeing that a little bit more and more lately. Uh the average of a band instrument is anywhere from thirty to sixty dollars a month. So we're trying to look towards the future and hoping that the economy eventually gets better, but what it is right now, we're kind of also planning for a worst case scenario and we don't wanna lose kids to band because their parents can't afford an instrument. Have you looked into or got the impression that that is a limitation that some students choose not to participate because they don't have an instrument, they can't afford it? That, that is a decision that they're making. Great.
So I'm on line ninety-eight now with new furniture fixtures. Um again, this was a line that was used for um in the past, which was for the library phase, we were able to complete that phase. So this is, we're looking at, especially considering our expansion possibilities, uh getting some new classroom furniture, um looking more towards the twenty-first century, some future learning. Uh so we, we budgeted about twenty-five hundred dollars in that line, hoping that um we could maybe bring in some. We have a lot of stand-up desks at this point, but bringing in some tables that are easily moved or some um new seating arrangements for kids in different areas of the school or in classrooms. Um and then new furniture, um new furniture computer equipment. Uh we did move, there's three thousand dollars in this line, but we did move uh some of that money to instructional equipment replacement. Um and that's two lines down at one oh three. Uh we're looking to, uh we have a couple of carts still in the hallway. Uh Bob has been trying to um break down the carts and have the jar systems in the classrooms. Uh so he has been able to do that in six, all over our middle school classrooms. So there's no more carts at the middle school. We have the jar systems in the classroom that kids plug their computers in at the end of the day. Uh we've been able to purchase a couple more this year and we're working on, he's working on fourth grade right now, getting jar systems into the fourth grade. Um and he would like to uh continue building those jar systems for second grade, I think. And was there any, any other grade?
Uh no, second grade.
Second grade is.
Great.
Yes. Uh so that's, that line is without. So that's, that line is what that line is. Line one oh-five, furniture fixture replacement. This is the infamous degree line. He does an awesome job replacing furniture for classrooms for teachers. If a teacher needs a new desk or a new chair. This is the line that it comes out of. He always uses that, spent that line down. And as you can see from twenty-twenty-one, we really spent that line down. So he, this is, this is kind of his line, right, that he uses for all of that replacement that has happened. Uh, line one oh, yes, Nate.
What, what was that last year, the fifty-sevens?
Um, that was like all of the, like the, what are some things that we bought out? There's things that the board had given us permission to purchase for the library, one library furniture or, um.
All these guys to space out everybody, all of the things.
A lot of stuff was paid for with the grant, but on top of that, we had the, we bought the huge new file, new cabinets that are on the stage to hold the.
Theater production.
Theater production stuff.
These tables. Okay, so some of these, some of this was paid for from the grant.
Correct.
But still, because the grant went into the general fund, if this is still in our budget, because the grant sort of was combined as just as regular, and kind of as per statement? Or should that have been separated out if it was paid for by the grant?
Yeah, this line does not have a grant, so.
No. The bank would be separate.
That would be, this would not be paid by the grant, okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, there would be none. We tried when, if there were instances when we thought we were going to purchase something, we may have used grant funds and held off on a purchase, but it's completely separate from your budget.
Yeah, I'd be happy to get a breakdown of what that money was, how we spent that money, combined with the, I mean, yeah.
Can I make another request for the next time I look at this? I would love to see the budgeting for twenty-twenty-one. Can I see a column before where this column starts?
Oh, you don't have that on there?
Um, yeah, it gets crowded because of the defaults. So I would think you would, is there something that you want to shrink so we can get that in there for you? Because I know what you mean, it just gets.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm sure. Because I think we jumped from column B to column R, and there's parts in the middle there.
Yeah, she has lots of history, it's just a matter of getting it in the sheet.
Yeah.
Gets all the years.
Line column.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if anything, Nate, for the twenty-twenty-one actual, you really want to see the.
The voted amount, right?
Do you want to see the voter, the actuals for twenty-twenty-one?
That is there.
Actuals here, no, I mean the budget.
The actuals there.
Right, but I'm saying, do you want to see the voted amount for twenty-twenty-one? Is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, I guess that is what I mean, the voted. Because what we voted and what we intended to spend it on didn't end up coming into fruition because it was a crazy year. And so we spent stuff that we, you know, and it just went all over the place. And I, I think looking at.
So is it, I think it might be better just to ask Amber to pull on as a separate printout, because I suspect the columns are already existing there?
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, let's just, let's just, do you want to just get a standalone?
I'll see if she can squish them a little bit and try to fit it in.
I'll bring my glasses, my glasses.
Or do you want to just have a standalone that shows proposed for twenty-twenty-one and the actuals for twenty-twenty-one, just to separate?
Um, yeah, whatever Amber thinks, I don't know. But I think it's, I think it's useful information just to see what we were expecting before the COVID hit.
Yeah, that's good point. I'll tell her to squish it in there.
Squish it?
It, it looks like she, because she has the numbers oriented to the right, and so there are spaces.
She could pick up a couple pixels.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at, yeah.
Looks like she could get a couple.
Couple pixels.
Yep.
Maybe squeeze one more letter column in there.
Yep. Yeah.
Thank you.
You don't need the margins, yeah.
Um, I, I just, while you were talking, I was able to go into our, our Xfinity, the, the, the budget thing that we use. I have visions, I'm losing my mind here.
Xfinity is something else.
I call IV, I copied the, the account line. And as I'm looking at this, the storage cabinets, we had chairs, high-rise mobile adjustable desks, replacement furniture for an off, sub-sit stand workstations, a replacement organizer for clothes, classroom stools, woodlocker benches, portable laptop workstation. So all of these were, and specifically Trisha always puts in that this was purchased from surplus. So, so those are the things that we had purchased. Just a few of the things that we had purchased. But, and like I said, I can have, I can put this out for you if you'd like.
No, I'll leave it for later.
Alright. Um, so moving down on line one oh-seven, this is computer network replacement. As you can see from in Bob's, the proposed technology line. This is, Bob talks to me about things like end of life and needing licenses and certain things ending by two thousand twenty-six, which seems like forever away, but really is ending it away. So this line will cover purchase of one hundred and thirty Chromebooks plus the licenses. We have several Chromebooks that are, are at their end of life. This includes money for printer replacements. As you, you know, we've been able to replace a couple of printers, but this just continue with that process. And that's, so that's what that line covers. And then we get down, I'm, I'm going through line one thirteen, several of these are not our lines. Into the special ed line, summer services are estimated to be up a little bit. And then we did notice that in the, the actuals for twenty-twenty-one, three hundred and eighty dollars was spent, but most of that staff that was, that worked during the summer were paid with IDPA grant for eighteen, nineteen, a little additional funding. So we were able to save somebody there. Going on down, we have CPI, we always have a line for CPI and CPR training for, in the training stipends. That remains the same. Next line that I was able to do, touch with special ed training. And so this is specific to our special ed staff. We just have a little bit down to about, at about a thousand dollars. Moving down, ours, line one thirty-two, that's our special ed copier that's in the office. And we, we, our, our current contract combines all the copiers together. We are actually looking at breaking out, breaking away from the current company that we're at. So we're working through, we're going to go through a new contract. So we'll, we'll have any updated numbers for that that we need for, when the budget is ready to, for its final look, yes.
Um, one thirty, my question is, we were just talking about that SAU board. Is this coming out of the SAU budget? Or do we have, we have our own in-school staff members who are physical therapists, speech behavior specialists? Or is that an SAU position and are we paying for it out of like Fund Five that we talked about last meeting?
No, those are not our employees, those are contracted. So we use a physical therapy agency and we contract for the services and the, and we pay them, the agency directly. So they're not employed by the SAU.
But that's because we, we have SAU positions, but we can't make use of the SAU positions? Or this is on top of that because?
No, we don't, we don't hire any physical therapists, because that's really a medical service, so.
So even at the SAU, we don't have medical?
No, we have occupational therapists, but not physical therapists.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That's what I'm getting at, thanks. Well, actually, sorry about that, Ben, Ben, but the behavior specialists we do, are any of those positions we do have on the SAU and would they be overlap?
Um, yes, so the speech services and the school psychologist services are usually part of the Fund Four budget, but you had to, we had to contract with an agency this year for school psychologists because we weren't able to find someone. So we'll be advertising again. And if that was the case, it will be in the diagnostic services line. So there are instances when we have to contract services and we don't have them here. But those are, none of those people are employed directly to, to by us or the SAU.
But is it going to be, I mean, if we can use, utilize our SAU personnel?
Yep.
Then it wouldn't need to show up in this line as I'm saying it?
Correct.
It would also be a lower rate because our, our people on staff would cost less?
It depends on what the agency, the experience of the, person the agency sends us versus the experience of the person we might hire.
Okay.
Your diagnostic services, when we get down there, is probably pretty low if nonexistent. And then if we do find someone, it would, we contracted services and get to our show that way.
Alright, so that's, I guess my point is that this is, this is a service that we, that would be, would be covered by the SAU if we can, if we can get that.
Part of them. Yes, part of them.
And then it would be a different line because it would go to the SAU other than here.
Yes. Correct. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So the next line, one thirty-four, is a ton of software licensing. This covers Office three-six-five specifically for our special ed staff, but also administration has, has that as well in a different line. That covers that, that subscription. And then the next two lines are not lines that I have, that I put in there, and then, you know, they're specific. And then the next three, one forty-three, one forty-four, and one forty-six are also student-specific. And we're special ed mileage, covering any, any special educators that have to travel for one reason or another. Special ed supplies, there are consumables, protocols, things that they are, that they need. And then we go down into line one fifty, and looking at some adaptive control that is needed. Specific computer and network equipment that's needed. Student-specific. And then we can get down into line one fifty-eight, so this begins our co-curricular. There's also, there's an appendix that I have that too, for co-curriculars as well. And this year, we had made, if you look at the, at the line, the appendix, you can see we have the athletic director in there. And then it has been several years that we have not needed a B team for soccer. So we are the A-Boy soccer coach. We decided to do two coaches at twelve hundred and two girls' coaches at twelve hundred because essentially they're both doing the same amount of work. So for a while, we had the A-Boy soccer coach and an A-Boy soccer assistant coach that was making, I believe, seven hundred dollars. And we decided just to take, take the boys, the B team, and then, and then just have the two soccer coaches for A and the A-team. And then, but we did keep an A and B team for basketball because we have, we have had a B team for basketball for a couple of years now. Anytime that we do need to bring in a B team, we certainly will consider that and, and try to work within the budget that we have.
Any other questions, I was thinking.
Yep.
Um, question, why do we pay the cheerleading coach less money than all the other coaches? Do they not practice as often?
I don't, yeah.
Correct, yeah, and it's very, it's a pretty short season. There are maybe like two-thirds of the basketball season.
Okay.
So it's not, it's, and they only, yeah, it's a very, and very limited program.
Okay. And we have not had it for a couple of years. It's one of those, as Brian says, one of those sports that comes in the.
Exactly, I heard, said you want it.
I, I think so, I think you're a little bit, I'm not, we have that in the budget documentation.
Mm-hmm.
Brian, to that extent, looking at that, same thing with the assistant coaches for baseball and softball. It seems like the common theme is, is that the coaches are twelve hundred bucks, whether they're assistant or not on the other sports, should it be consistent across the board?
I mean, ideally, yes. I mean, I would support that. They do just as much work, so.
Okay.
We can revise that for the next one.
We can revise that.
Yeah, I don't know, what's the board's take on that?
I would concur. You're saying it again, you're saying it for the assistants?
Yeah, for paying the assistants for the other sports, the same as the quote-unquote head coaches, should end up being consistent across baseball and softball as well.
For which ones are we paying the same?
Soccer.
And basketball.
Basketball. And so my thought is, realistically, if there is no cheerleading, I would just move the money to the cheerleading line, down to a dollar or zero it out, and just slide the money over, and that'll get you all with a hundred bucks away from a fine.
Alright, can I just, so you're, you're saying that the A, A-Boy soccer coach, there's two A-Boy soccer coaches,
I lost it.
Correct.
Rather than one being an assistant, is what you're saying? I got you, though, okay.
We changed that this year because they really do work side by side. And to pay someone seven hundred and the other one twelve hundred was.
I mean, when I was, when I was Jeff's assistant coach, I did it for free. Or, or I paid Jeff and he never told me. I pay you what you are. Oh.
Also to note, we, the volleyball, we've only had one volleyball team. We did budget in there for a coach for varsity only, and then a coach for, if that coach also taught JV, then we get an additional couple hundred dollars. But we've only been, we've only fielded one team for volleyball for several years now. So we removed that amount of money for the, for the varsity and JV team coach, because we have not a JV team for volleyball.
Question about that sort of idea of sizes of teams. I mean, obviously last year, the size of teams were affected significantly. And then this year, I feel like there was a gap where I'm seeing this, and I think a number of students sort of stopped participating because of this, whatever, and then the teams aren't coming back as quickly as they, but do you think that there may be a need?
A lot, actually a lot bigger teams because kids are starting to come back out of COVID or COVID, you know? When, when we added volleyball, we significantly hindered the girls' soccer team. Because.
Same pool of students.
Same pool of students.
Okay.
This year, we actually dipped into fifth grade girls' soccer, which, when you look at on the field, an eighth grade girl compared to a fifth grade girl is significantly different. Regardless of their skill, their size determines everything, you know, in that sense for impact and speed and collisions and things of that nature. So, but, and boys, like that's, was one of our reasons, like we, we fielded twenty-two kids on a team this year. We never, we haven't had, there's no team around that, there's no schools around that have a B team. So that's essentially why we got rid of the Bs, because, so we're fielding bigger boy soccer teams and smaller girl soccer teams because of volleyball.
Okay.
So I've been coaching soccer for six years, and the numbers are pretty much the same as when I started.
Okay.
So we're not seeing, you know, a huge, the COVID hasn't, didn't change much, so.
Also to note, the, we did increase the drama coach to fifteen hundred because of the, it just intense number of hours that they, that they, including performance nights and practices and.
Think about a dollar an hour in the end.
Right, right, pretty much so.
It's like you guys. It's actually a dollar an hour more.
So we did increase that, we're very hopeful, I don't know if we will do drama performance this year, but very hopeful for next year. So we increased that line as well, and, yeah, go ahead.
Well, sorry, one more follow-up on the, on the coach question and the team size. When we go into next year with the handbook and all of that stuff, I mean, you had said that if the signups warranted, then we would have room in here to add another, a B team essentially. Is that still, that's true? So therefore, we can have that comment in the handbook, that if we have enough signups, then we're not going to be cutting kids, but we're going to be offering a B team if we have the numbers to do that?
Not necessarily, I mean, it's only, whereas, you can only have a B team if the league allows for it. There is, like you said.
They have to have someone to play.
Yeah, there's no other school in the SA, in our Southeast league that has any B teams for soccer.
Okay.
Basketball, yes, because basketball, you, you're essentially looking at twelve kids on a team, where soccer, we run eighteen traditionally. This year, we had twenty-two. But you have, and more kids tend to play basketball because it is indoors and it's the winter, there's, you know, there's less travel teams per se compared to soccer.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Um, so again, on the appendix, the after-school program, we have not had the enrichment after-school program going for, for a couple, I guess, two years at this point. It doesn't last yet for a little bit, and then. So the, and then the next line down on the budget covers co-curricular officials. So we have, we've tried to include two officials for home games, for our, our, for boys and girls teams. And then we do have our dues, co-curricular supplies, covers uniform replacement, musical rights, sport supplies, ball that needs to replace, that type of thing. And then co-curricular equipment, this is a line that last year, we had the soccer nets in there and the locker benches, and we've been able to get all of that. So for going into next year, we're not really planning on anything for co-curricular equipment. That's different than co-curricular supplies. Co-curricular supplies is our uniform replacement line and equipment replacement line. So those are, that number's down as you can see. And due to these, uh, college line. Let me go through a couple of lines. No, one seventy-seven, I believe, is the next line. And that is, that covers, it's another technology line that covers Dibbles Fitness Gram and Teaching Strategies Goal, which is a preschool program used for our, all of our preschoolers. So that's, we'll cover that, that line covers those things. Then we get down into our nurse section, health section. And her line's pretty much held, held the same. The health equipment, the calibration of her audiometer has gone up slightly. And this is the, this next year will be the year to replace some of the health books that she has, those health books that come out every, every, every year. So we, she was looking for an increase in that line, other than not, those lines help.
So real quick, why do we see the reduction? Does that have to do with what Dave was asking about on the nurse salary?
No, we just don't have salaries in there yet.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah.
Sorry.
So this, this will hopefully at the next meeting look vastly different as far as.
The bottom lines, yeah.
Bottom lines, yeah.
But going back, sorry, real quick, one seventy-five diagnostics, that's what.
That's what you were talking about earlier. Yep, yep, so if we're able to hire someone, then that salary would show up there instead of contracted services.
Thank you.
Yes, right. As you know, the nurse salary also, we're looking to include ten, we've tried to get five extra days that has not been able to get in, but really she needs probably ten extra days. So we are going to try to get that into, when Amber does the salaries, we'll include ten extra days into her contract. She comes in all summer long and gets ready for the following, wraps up her school year and gets ready for the following school year. So she should be paid accordingly for those and by adding ten extra days, she'll be able to do so. I'm down at one ninety-five now, the assembly line. We've been able to hold, obviously we didn't have anything, any of that, nothing was paid out of actuals for twenty twenty-one. I'm not sure what we, if we have nothing planned to write this minute for twenty twenty-two, but we know that the line is available for us. So we're holding that line for next year as well. Curriculum stipends, we've been able to hold that line at about twelve thousand. Actually, for twenty-one did go over a little bit. We were even committed to pay for some PLL stipends out of that line last year. The twelve thousand dollars does seem to cover us and this is the line that we pull out for teachers who do summer work over the summer or throughout the school year. If they work beyond the school day, this is where we pull up payment of that. And then we're going down to a couple of contractual items, but two oh five is in-service training. Next year is our recertification year for CPR. And then contractual line, and then we're done on two oh nine for professional books and subscriptions. And that, that's just for staff development books. And we've been able to hold that line at five hundred dollars, so we'll keep that. And we get into two thirteen, which is educational media. So some of those lines, you'll see electronic subscription licensing. This holds, this, that line is for atrium and network utilities.
Those are library subscriptions, those are student line subscriptions?
I, that's, that atrium and network utility is, I'm pretty sure, involved in a, in a.
Library.
For, specifically for the library, yeah, SAE-driven. So.
But it's broken out, there was a previous library line for subscriptions or for licenses?
Yep, yep, a lot of, yes, so like something that's used for the whole school is, tumble books or something like that, or PebbleGo, something like that that's used is put into the regular educational software lines. But these are, these two are specific for library.
So like signing up books or something like that?
Yes, yeah.
That sort of stuff, gotcha, thank you.
Next line down, two eighteen is library supplies. And the increase is just to cover the, you know, the general increase that we've been seeing all around. Then we have some library periodicals, that does a nice job getting some student magazines in. Next line is general reference materials, just a slight increase in that area. And then we've got some library equipment, those three lines. We, maybe repairs and maintenance, we have not had to use, so many dollars are out. But we did increase the audio original material, which includes our subscription to Sora, which is where we get our ebooks and audio book content from.
I think I saw Sora in the previous library line. Can you remind me which number that was? I don't remember that one, my customer, I thought Sora was in one of them. Maybe I'm wrong.
Oh, in my notes up here, yep. Electronic subscription and post-places near pod and library Sora for ebooks and, okay, that's a good to note, thanks.
Which, what line is that, what I'm talking about?
That's in the appendix on.
Oh, that's in the appendix, for.
Yeah, it was in the appendix.
Thank you, that's right.
So I will confirm that with, with, with looking at, again, what I like that. So I can remember to, to talk to them about. And then next several lines are contractual. We do go down to the two thirty-nine line, staff training. This was a new line we tried to put in last year. Because we fell into default, we, it was, we lost the, we lost the line. So this will cover the NELMS conference. Couple of years ago, we sent a big team to the NELMS conference and they stayed overnight. The board was generous to let us do that. This will include staffing of the day before, so that there's not that travel time in the morning and stay overnight and then come back, I think it's a two-day conference if I remember correctly. So that's, that, we're trying to get that line back in yet. And then we get down to the school board. If I had more control over that, I would give you a million dollars each. And I think it might be. Be down to, sorry, two seventy-eight, professional news. That includes MISA's subscription to Najah, we call it Najah, New Hampshire Association of Special Educator Administrators. And that includes the New Hampshire Association of School Principals for both Mr. Reeve and I and then the NELMS subscription as well. And then I believe we, there's a couple of others that is, are included in that line. And then we get to near our tech summer line, which is two eighty-two. We've been able to hold that line. This is when Bob, this is a Bob brother, and before now it's Bob Ford. And I say, I need summer jobs, I need help there. That one, two eighty-nine, that is definitely an SAE line. That's the one call now, Alma, Apple Track, the nurse soccer, she uses Snap. That's included in that, the little guardian, help desk, all of that is included in there. The outside tech support for computer, that was, we originally had a thousand dollars in that line. I'm looking at line two ninety-two. That was the help that we got with our website, but the SAE is taking over that work and our technology folks, we do go, we do our own website work now. So we were able to take that line, drop that line down to a dollar. Postage is held at about the two thousand. Office supplies, one two ninety-eight, held at five hundred. Same with professional books on this line as well, held at five hundred. And the new equipment, furniture and fixtures, this is specific for office. So we put that back at five hundred. Anytime we fall into a default, as you know, we lose any kind of new money that we tried to get. And now I'm down at three oh three, replacement furniture. We're looking to place something or another specific to the office or, you know, the lobby space. And then I did line three oh five. I did a, I did put in, I increased the commencement line. As you know, this seventh grade class is the infamous third grade class that never stops coming. Turned into fourth grade class, turned into fifth grade class, but these, those students are graduating next year. So we have over sixty kids in that class and so we've increased that line a bit to accommodate for that large eighth grade class. Now I'm down to operational maintenance, line three oh nine. So the next line that we, that we have, that I have, I was able to work with was line three seventeen for cleaning supplies. Chris is able to maintain what he needs with the, with the line with twenty-five thousand. He has twenty-five thousand this year and he's able to get what he needs with that amount of money.
Can we look at the telephone just for a second? Was that an increase, increase in the contract? Is that why it's in the default? Why did it tip up that much? I mean, it didn't from last year, so why did we?
What are you looking at?
This is line three fifteen. It was, we got thirteen thousand from the default last year. Why was it so much more than?
It's been on default for what, two years?
Yeah, it just carries over, the default just carries over.
But we, we must have increased our service.
Yeah, because that's also covering, isn't that internet, I did, terrible?
Uh, I don't think.
Internet's above, no problem.
I'm sure the service went up and default didn't allow for it for some reason.
Okay.
I'll, I'll check with Amber there to make sure that that's correct. Yep.
And so then we go down to line three twenty-four. And so Chris is looking to do, buy some new equipment. To do furniture, furnishings, some replacement, equipment replacement, replacement furniture and fixtures. He's just looking for a thousand dollars into those lines to replace or purchase things that need to be replaced in the maintenance department or for the school, like, well, some of the things we were talking about though. I think I know what they said, I called the, I think.
Coach, yes.
One more.
Yep.
Um, line three twenty-three. I just had my old tank fill that it was Nash, a dollar sixty. So is that a realistic thing? If it's going up, we need to be budgeting a bigger number than that.
We have been typically going out with the town, so I'll ask Amber if that's been done. But we typically do get a set rate. I'm not sure if that's it, if that's an old one from last year and hasn't been done yet, I'll find out.
Thank you.
She didn't, she didn't.
That's a great way.
She'll be here at the next meeting and I'm sure there's going to be some changes to the budget between now and then, so that I will ask down now.
I'm down on line three twenty-nine now, that's the next line that we have control over. So that's maintenance supplies. And again, there's an appendix for all of this. The maintenance supplies includes things like air filters, paint for interior, exterior, gas and oil for equipment, metal for recycling, auto scrubbing maintenance, ceiling tiles. So that's all included in that line. And then we go down to line three thirty-one for grounds maintenance. And as you can see, that's, there's an increase there. And you can look under the maintenance appendix. Twenty-one, twenty-two, this year is a year, three-year, three-year contract. So our people will be going out in twenty-two, twenty-three. So he's anticipating an increase from nineteen ninety-sixty to twenty-five thousand. He's, or he's budgeting, guessing that that would be. They have increased, and then we have, in that area, we also have the turf care program. We also have the athletic field maintenance, which has typically cost about fifteen thousand dollars to fix sinkholes, maintain them, build them. And then we also have some parking lot maintenance with all the maintenance equipment to maintain. So the next line that we have is the line three thirty-three. That's equipment repair, so the snow blower, just maintaining the snow blower. Now I've really seen an increase in that line. And then contracted services is line three thirty-five. As you can see, that was the actual for twenty-one. So much, but this, under the maintenance appendix, contracted services. Trying to see what it is, what it is. We have a new water testing, a new contractor for water testing. So we saw, saw an increase there. We saw an increase in castal waste. Well, we've been able to cut down a little bit because we're using our dishwasher now, but for a while we had a lot of this lunch program that we had to, for obvious reasons. Hampshire fire protection, the annual check of the extinguisher is increased a bit.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Bye-bye.
We've got a subject tank went from sixteen hundred to sixty-six hundred. What, what are we doing? Sorry. There's a five thousand dollar increase in that line. At least in the appendix, I apologize.
No, no, that's good, I'm, I'm going to, oh, it's on the next page.
Or if we can just get it updated, that's fair.
Subject tank, twenty-one, the twenty-twenty bill, one, is it just thirty-two hundred dollars?
How much?
Thirty-two hundred dollars in, for it, one, twenty-twenty.
Is the snaking of lines or whatever that we've had to do, is that where that lives?
It does, yep.
Okay.
But I'm happy to ask him why it, you know.
Hold on.
He was thinking he was going to have to do that for a year, thirty-two hundred dollars or?
Okay. Yeah, I, when Mike was here, that was a recommendation that happened twice, done twice.
Pumped or chased?
If it was thirty-two hundred, that'd be three visits, right? No, two, what is it, oh, sixty-six, sorry.
And then two hundred dollars for, good measure, okay. All right, sorry, we can.
That's okay. I have nothing else to ask him about for sure. All right. Let me get into our, our three, line three three-nine, people transportation. I, these are not ones that I have control over, but we do have line three four eight. This is for athletic trips. And this is our field trips for, for team travel. And then again, the field trip line, three fifty. And this is the line that last year, for two years, we tried to get the ten thousand dollars in there for, to cover this sixth grade science camp. So we'll try it again. And then several lines here, I think that's probably covers what I.
So I think what I would say, this is primarily in an effort to be quasi-respectful of the chief time. Because I think we kind of indicated to him that we try to wrap up around nine o'clock in an email I saw. If there's any questions that the board members have regarding the budget, I'd say throw them out there or if we can come to the next meeting with questions or if you want to email them in advance. I think that's the most efficient way for us to kind of process this. Obviously, this will look different when the SEU wants to populate the rest of the lines. Is there a reasonable approach?
Yes.
That being said, in an effort to hopefully try to wrap things up, maybe a little sooner than later, on the board report side, the PTO has abandoned the ship. So we will not have a PTO report. Has the executive board met?
No, but the full SAE board met and passed the budget last week.
Okay.
Hope we see that, and then it's already in just budget.
Principal Wade, do you have a report for us and you want to table it for the next meeting?
I'm happy to table it if that's what you would like, but I would like to bring up one thing.
Yes.
We, as you know, have been struggling with the loss of a war and numbers teacher. Our sixth grade team was able to use that time, that block of time. They've actually absorbed it into their core subjects and have expanded their time for ELA, math, and science and social studies. But our seventh and eighth grade classes are now, in hopes that we were able to be able to find somebody, have not been able to, have not done anything with that, with that block of time. So we're looking at one to two scenarios. I'd like you to bring to the board's attention and maybe have some input from you. We either, for seventh and eighth grade, we either are looking to help them increase some of their core instruction time by removing that. Right now it's a study lab for kids. So remove that study lab and give that time back to the teachers to produce their core subjects. Or put out to the families to utilize that time for V-Lax. We have gone back and forth several times with V-Lax about whether they could accommodate the number of kids that we would have. Um, we have gone back and forth several times with V Lacks about whether they could accommodate the number of kids that we would have, we're looking upwards of seventy-five to eighty to maybe ninety kids.
That's if everybody took it.
It, for seventh and eighth grade. So we have sixty-one seventh graders and about forty eighth graders, not all of them would take, so some of those kids don't take world language, but um, part of the problem, well, here's some, the, the, obviously, there's a lot of advantages to kids being able to access V Lacks, but one of the biggest issues with V Lacks is that it's family-driven, so parents and guardians actually have to sign their child up for the V Lacks course. Um, and then, but what we could do is accommodate and provide the time for them to be able to do their work, but there, that would, our staff, we're not world language teachers, there, they don't, they're not able to help the kids with any of their assignments. The time is independent, they would have to work independently, um, and so we do worry that we would not get a hundred percent participation for it, so then, so then what you have is you have kids, some kids who have study lab, and some kids who are doing V Lacks, and I'm not sure that's gonna solve our problems, so. Uh, that's where we're at, I, I, I'm happy to go, we're happy to go in either direction. Um, but our seventh and eighth grade team is looking to do something different with that block of time right now that they, where kids are supposed to either be in uh, world language wellness, or media lit, and right now, they're in world language, I mean, they're in media lit, um, wellness, or have another study lab, and so we're looking to take that study lab time out. And either have the kids working on V Lacks, or having the seventh and eighth grade team be able to absorb that back into their core subjects.
Thoughts from the board?
I would defer to you guys, I don't pretend to know how to answer that question.
Yeah, let me just go ahead. How long are the periods right now?
Uh, roughly fifty minutes, I mean, you're, you're gonna get realistically five more minutes, you know, five to seven minutes, you're sort of including that in time.
So, so your approach would be literally just to expand the, the, uh, period?
Year.
By five minutes?
Yeah, right, exactly.
Most of the time, the same, and just using that, was it two, would be, how many days of world language?
Uh, three.
Three per week?
Yes.
Three per? So they would get, or three per something, sorry.
Sixty, yeah, three per sixty.
So every other day, effectively?
Yeah, give or take, yeah.
In my little?
Yeah, perfect schedule, yes.
In Zach's world.
In my little peanut brain.
Right.
So realistically, I mean, do you think the tape rate, well, does V Lacks have the capacity, if we reach out to them to see if they actually have the bandwidth to tape another?
At the time when we did reach out, they did, uh, we have not reached out lately, um, but again, we, not every, we can't get parents to sign up on Alma to do their emergency forms, never mind sign their kids up for an extra course. So realistically, maybe two to ten, out of ten kids are gonna take advantage of this.
So, and, and that, and if we decide to go the route of expanding, or giving the time back to the core classes, these, kids can still do V Lacks, but then they would have to do it at home, it would be, we wouldn't have the time to give them in school. So if we decided that to go in the direction of, of giving back five to ten minutes or so for each of the classes, we, we, you know?
They'll still have study labs, there, there's still three built-in study labs, um, regardless if they were thinking world language or not, so.
I think that it's not necessarily the time that, like Kristen Ryan alluded to, the support that kids need to do V Lacks is much more than we could give them, because we don't have any world language teachers, we've got to the point, it's not necessarily about the time.
At this point, are you asking us to just, to like, tweak the schedule a little bit? What are you, what?
Well, we just wanted your input in for you to know what, what direction that we are thinking about going in.
I need a translator if I'm going to Paris. But right now, it's, it's gonna be a few, a few more years, but that's my own.
So as a parent, would you, you know, would you sign Izzy up for French, V Lacks, and give her that, if we had time to work in school, she could do that, but she could also do it.
As a parent, if you know my daughter, she would sign herself up, and that would be the end of it, but that's my daughter who is very different than other people's.
Good point, good point.
And I think, I think a piece of this is parents, here, I guess, community at large, I mean, this is outside of our control, like, we, they have, these kids are obligated to fulfill certain needs, and we don't know what those needs are, you know, they're supposed to meet with their instructor once a week, we have, we won't be able to manage that, we can't micromanage that, it's impossible, so, um, it ultimately comes down to the kid signs up, if they're not doing their work, they get kicked out of the program. It's not like here where they're not doing their work, we have interventions in place, they, they are booted from the program and they don't participate, so.
I, I just, I didn't know if the, I wasn't curious if the students had any ideas about utilizing that time, like, if, if there was some other need that they were thinking, like, oh, we should have a time for it. And I mean, I know there's seventh and eighth graders who may be like, let's have a big recess, maybe some of them would do that, but, I mean, given, given some, like, ideas, would they be able to come up with, like, wow, like, and, and maybe it's just like, um, my lack of understanding of the full curriculum, do they, do they have time to do self-projects, self-learning, self-directed, I, I mean, is there any? I know, I know we don't have the facility for that yet.
Right.
To, to support them in, in.
And we don't, and we don't necessarily have a facilitator to do that, so if we're gonna, and I think looking to add another element into an already over, overplayed situation, it's not gonna be well on the parts of the teachers.
I'm just trying to think, you know, some other, like, there is, it, 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 there isn't a, a block where they could, like, oh, that's where they can assist other classrooms, or?
Yeah, we're still trying to avoid kids going into, you know, for all the different, on that.
Yeah.
Um, if, if it does get absorbed into the other classes, there would still be three study halls, could then a student, let's say, like Izzy, um, take the study halls, get signed up for V Lacks, and go to the library during those study halls? And work independently, no teacher, just?
Yep.
Parent at home, V Lacks, could a student like that take a French class through V Lacks with the three study halls per cycle?
Right, yeah, and there is a designated room for those kids to be in the study lab, so those rooms are, you know, there's a teacher in there overseeing the study lab, so it, library is option sometimes, sometimes it's not.
There would be a place for that.
Yeah.
And so that could be made available to parents.
Mm-hmm.
There is time for this, if you'd like to pursue this.
Right, exactly.
And here's the link, and go for it, and if your child needs some time in school, we'd be happy to provide that for them during their normal study lab time, they can use that time if they would like.
I like that idea. So you're hybrid again?
Hybrid in?
You're hybrid. So what we wanna do is take that idea you gave us, and just mash it together.
Yeah, and, and we can also see what the numbers are, you know, if we're seeing seventy percent of the kids are signed up, then we keep the three, we keep the extra three study lab, that would have been world language, and we just keep that in place, and they don't condense, they don't expand their core of their times by a few minutes.
I think it's worth, so it sounds like it's worth at least kind of bringing V Lacks into the picture for the families that want to utilize it.
They're not gonna exhaust me.
Yeah. Throw the line in the water, see if, see if you catch anything.
Alright, thanks, thank you for your input, it's greatly appreciated, and I will put my principal's report away until next time.
Okay, alright, uh, C R B, did you meet?
Nope.
C R B is not met, uh, building expansion committee, Jeb, I think we kind of handled that with the engineers?
Yes, we did.
Alright, high school options, Nate?
We have meetings lining up.
We are negotiating.
We are negotiating.
And that is how negotiations are explained, uh, until they are complete. M B C updates, the M B C kinda had its second meeting of the season last night, it was a relatively brief meeting, the uh, select board turned their budget over and some conversation, uh, occurred, but I believe they will start to tackle that budget in more detail uh, next. Uh, policies.
Table.
Uh, let's table policies. Uh, brief information from Patty regarding data for, from the dashboard.
Nothing that would change.
Nothing that changes, anything.
Status, no.
Alright, any questions on that scope? Anybody, I want to invite soul, okay. Uh, public comments, looks like, I'm pretty good, Chief, are you public commenting us?
I am.
Are you public commenting us as Matt Fisher or as Chief Fisher?
Uh, Fire Chief Matt Fisher.
Come on up, sir.
Not about your policies though, but I saw at the end of the agenda and I heard it, so I wanted to jump in real quick.
Yes.
Okay. So following your, your meeting, I invite all of you to participate in the fire drill with me.
Alright.
I'm gonna test the second floor just to see, uh, see what happens, since I was talking earlier, curious.
And like right now?
Well, when the meeting's done.
Great way to wrap it up, actually, it should have been that an hour and a half ago. We can make that happen next time. If you're still here at the next meeting, right around hour three.
Yes.
Uh, we'll have to work on it, uh.
Yeah, it could be a little like, bad signal type thing.
Uh, over my right shoulder, there's an exit sign blocked by a bunch of tables and chairs.
Well, the sign's not blocked.
Okay, come on, bring that, the emergency doors are being blocked by a bunch of tables and chairs.
After nine o'clock, we're not responsible for anything I said.
Okay.
I, I suspect that.
That can't happen.
That would be revenue needed in the morning.
Okay, I, I'm not a figure here often, I don't wanna be, but we gotta be mindful, stuff like.
Tell him you moved it so that we could put the chairs right down.
Yeah, that's not, that's only like this right now.
No, no, I understand, but even if it's like this every time you guys have a meeting, that can't be like that, it's a lighted exit.
Okay.
Alright.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Did we have a non-public meeting?
No.
We did not, alright, so, uh, we can go ahead and, uh, what promotion to adjourn? A second, and all in favor? We'll give Mr. Fisher a moment or two to allow us to gather our things, he's gonna get a noise right now.